Thank you, Chip. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Redmond City Hall Council Chambers. Community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, Ziply Channel 34, or listen live by calling 510-335-7371. Council members in attendance are Fields, Critzer, Anderson, Stewart, Carson, and Khan, and myself, Forsythe. There are three items on the agenda tonight: 2022 Annual Community Survey Results, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Budgeting Process Recommendations, and Council Talk Time. First item on the agenda: 2022 Annual Community Survey Results, with Jill Smith, Communications Manager, introducing the item.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, I have Ian Stewart with me, with EMC Research. And you may recall, EMC is our contract to help us with our annual community survey. So he will run through the process that we took, slightly different from previous years, along with the results, and then also speak to the levy, which was requested by council when we met at the committee of the whole meeting. So we'll cover all those things tonight. And with that, I will share my screen and turn it over to Ian.
Thank you very much. Would you like me to take questions as I go along, or wait till the end? Wait till the end. Okay, we'll wait till the end to ask questions. As that's coming up, again, hi, I'm Ian Stewart, Principal with EMC Research. We are a public opinion research firm, and we're going to go through this presentation with you. We also have a bunch of historical presentations if you want to talk about them, going all the way back to 2008, I think, 2008, 2009. So we've got a lot of history that we can speak to. This survey was a change from previous surveys that we've done for you. At the time we were first hired, we suggested you go to a voter survey. This last year, we've had a lot of conversation in the last couple of years in doing this. What if we talked to all residents? What would that look like? How would we do it differently? Would the results change? And we want to involve more people in the process, so that was what we did this year. This year's project was to talk to all residents. We do the 16th through the 23rd of January, into February. We did actually skip 2022, mostly because of COVID. We actually said, not a good idea, why bother? Like, lots of stuff is changing right now. Let's wait until COVID is done and talk again. Yeah, well, I've got the results here of, we'll talk about in a minute. That's okay. So we did a different approach this time, and that approach is called address-based sampling. And essentially, what that does is it takes every potential residential address in the city and gives it an equal chance to participate. And we use postcards. You can see an example there in the corner, what that postcard looks like. And then we send it out, and essentially, we're looking for a randomization approach. We're trying to get residents by that approach. And then we're comparing that to the census of what we know about the city and saying, do we have a representative sample of what's happening? The answer is, yes, we do. We did a total of 572 interviews that works out to a margin of error of plus or minus 4.1 percentage points at the 95% confidence interval, which is a fancy we have saying. If we repeated the survey 100 times, you'd see the results that we're seeing here to within plus or minus four percentage points, 95 times out of 100. So yes, there's a possibility that the results will be completely different, but that's how the confidence interval works, and that's how margin of error works. Another way to apply margin of error is essentially look at any survey result I'm showing you. The closer to 50/50 that result is, the more likely that the margin of error is small. It's essentially that, at that 4.1. The closer you get to 95% agreement, your margin of error drops, right? So if we have 95% of people agreeing with something, the margin of error is significantly smaller, right? We're much more certain that what we're showing you is the actual result. We offer the survey in multiple languages, but it turns out that 99% of respondents actually took it in English. So although we offered that as a choice, people did end up taking English almost exclusively. And where possible, we're comparing with past results. But of course, we have a library of those results. If you're curious what Redmond looked like a long time ago, you could see what those look like. We'll start with a few quality-of-life questions, which stayed, the questions themselves are similar. As you can see in the lower corner, we give you the actual question text. So how would you rate the quality of life in Redmond? And we can do it on an excellent, very good, satisfactory, only fair or poor scale. What I'm showing you here is a couple of different combinations. So the positive ratings, that's the excellent and very good, is combined together, gets to about 78%, really consistent with the last time we asked it. The excellent, which is the best part of that rating, is the dotted line you're seeing there. So you can see the excellent has stayed also pretty consistent with a slight drop-off, right? When we're looking at three or four points different, that's within the margin of error. So when we look at that change, that's not really a change, right? That's statistical noise that you're seeing in there. And then at the bottom are either the middle-ground ratings or the negative ratings. The negative rating has also stayed really consistent over the years of just a few points, under 10 points, seven points. Again, once again, a difference between eight and seven, that's not statistically different. That's the same rating between the last time we did this survey. So one of the other things we ask is, at the beginning of the survey, you can see the question number here, question four, we're really early in the survey. What do you think is the most important problem facing the city of Redmond today? That's intentionally asked. We do do it essentially at a negative ask, like, tell us what the problems are that you're facing in the city. And we're giving you a sense of what this looks like, not just for Redmond, but what does it look like in Puget Sound generally? We've done some other work in other communities, so how does Redmond compare? They're not all the same year, so there are some differences in the time series that are happening here. But if you look just on the far right at Redmond alone, we do this as open-ended questions, which means that the respondents are telling us what they think, and then we put them back in the category. So if you actually picked this apart, affordable housing is going to be full of a variety of answers. Some of them will just say affordable housing specifically, other people will give us a full sentence, a paragraph. Whatever they want to say is up to them. We put that back into this category. So affordable housing, cost of living, and taxes are the three that we combined into this category. They were sort of the best fits for that category. And then the next one, growth, overdevelopment, and overpopulation. If you compare this to the last time that we did this survey, what you're going to find is that the growth, overdevelopment, and overpopulation was the leading concern the last time we did this, at 26%. So that kind of stayed the same. What changed was the affordable housing mentions. That has increased by quite a bit. And I think people are seeing that during COVID. As I said, lots of things have changed. One of the things that has changed is this question of affordability and housing affordability, specifically. The further back you go, the more traffic is going to be concerned, but you can see traffic has dropped off. That actually stayed pretty consistent. But then, if you look at this and you look at, in comparison to other cities in the region, some interesting differences start to pop out. So if you look at affordable housing, there's consistent mentions there in both Bellevue and Kirkland, as an example. One of the places I start to notice the difference is in crime. Look at the crime numbers, particularly in Seattle. That's not a surprise, right? We hear that a lot in Seattle. But look at Bellevue, and Everett, and Kirkland, right? There's a lot more consistency here with places like Kirkland than there is with Bellevue, in terms of that's double, if you look at Bellevue, in terms of concerns about crime. And then the next one, if you look at homelessness, it barely even registers in Redmond and also Kirkland, but you can look at Everett, Bellevue, and Seattle, where it's starting to be into the higher double digits in Bellevue, and off the charts in Seattle and Everett, right? We're looking at third, 40% of mentions in Everett. So it gives you a sense of how Redmond feels different in these open-ended mentions than the rest of the region. We then followed up with a question of, what do you think should be the city of Redmond's number-one priority over the next two years? Is this a different way to ask kind of the same question, right? We're not asking it as a negative now. We're asking, all right, what's the opportunity? What do you think we should be working on? Affordable housing comes down on top, but it's 16%. If I go back and forth briefly, right? Think about an open-ended response at 25% versus 16%. These are different answers. They're 10 points lower, and you can see that across the board here, we have smaller proportions giving us that answer. So there's a smaller concentration for each of these open-ended answers. Affordable housing, and then crime. Interestingly, crime barely, sort of barely registered here at 7%. When you say, what could we be working on, crime actually goes up to 12%. So it increases by, you know, five-ish points. That's outside of the margin of error. Growth and overdevelopment, overpopulation, which is interesting. Again, if I flip back, that came out on top as one of the most important concerns, but it's not something people think that the city should be working on. So it's interesting, when you think about it that way, the priorities start to change. And there's a lot more priorities that are listed in here that don't come out when we ask about it just as a problem. You also can look at this word cloud we did, which sometimes gives you a better sense of it, like what's coming out on top. And that's how it looks to you when we do the word cloud. On this slide, we actually test your city priorities, and these four priorities that are sort of your guiding principles. And we say, do you agree or disagree with that? We read them the entire statement. We give them the strategic response, and we read them that. We read all four of these and say, all right, do you agree or disagree with that? And we've consistently seen a high-level agreement with this every time we've tested it for you. It has changed this time, though, right? So we think about changing over the years, the 2021 and 23 versions that we've tested. The agreement is even higher this year at 86%, with 53% of that being strongly agreed and another 33% somewhat. So if you're looking for alignment on priorities, you're there with residents in terms of these four that you're showing them. Yes?
I don't know if I can interrupt, but a quick question on this one. I know we added in this version a description of what each of those priorities are. Do you think that that might have made a difference in terms of response?
Sort of. At 80% agreement and 86% agreement, it's not a huge difference in the two of those. The intensity's a little better this year, so yes, probably it helps people to understand that.
Great.
Also, I would also say back, it's kind of hard to disagree with these. These are all pretty good things, right? So the question here is, are we aligned? Do residents think we're going in the same direction as them? The majority is, the vast majority is yes. The next one we focus on, because the next set of ratings we're going to go into differ from this, I want to talk about information sources, where people are getting their information about the city. So we say, this question text is, here are some sources you might get information from the city. Tell me how often you use each one to do that. The city of Redmond's own print newsletter is the most often mentioned, at 45%, 20% regularly, and 25% often. So the regularly means I'm reading essentially every one of those. And the often is, I see it occasionally, and I use it. The next one down is word of mouth, and the regularly drops off here quite a bit. You can see that of the items we could offer, the city of Redmond's focus print newsletter comes out on top by quite a bit for all of them, and it also comes out in terms of regularity of use. If you look down the rest of the list, there are other city offerings that are in here. So city of Redmond website, city of Redmond's weekly email newsletter, all the city offerings are registering in some degree or another. You're seeing a small proportion of people saying, yes, that's what I'm using as a source. As we get down to the bottom of the list, you're seeing more social media mentions, so Facebook, Twitter, other social media mentions, community neighborhood associations. But the city itself and the city communications from a variety of sources are really registering across the board as being used by a good proportion of people. These don't exactly overlap, right? So we're saying, tell us what you're using, and they're allowed to pick more than one category. So it's not as if one is offsetting the other. So, but this is a good way to get a sense of what are people hearing about, and it's the city offerings that are really registering here as a way that people are getting information about the city. Okay. Moving on, we're doing a series of city ratings and priorities. So the first set of these is all done on an excellent, good, only fair, and poor scale. The better ratings are in the dark blue and light blue, so that's the excellent and good on the positive side. And then the negative side, the only fair and poor, that's the pink and the red. So what we're looking for here is two things. We're looking for, where are the majority positive, and where is the gap the biggest? So overall, this question we ask first. What would you say the city government is doing overall? That rating is 65% positive and 27% negative is really good. But looking at the gap there, 38 points, difference between the positive and the negative. What I will note is that most of this rating is in the good category, right? So we're thinking about intensity here. If you look through this list of intensity, the first one that we'll get to in a minute has the highest intensity of excellent. The rating here of excellent to good, if you look at overall, excellent to poor, 13% excellent, 7% poor. So there's definitely a lean towards the excellent, but it's not big, right? It's a six-point gap between those. So the intensity is on the positive side, but most of the rating there is in the good category, which I feel like, we should feel pretty good about a city rating for a government entity, essentially, getting a positive rating here. As you move to the list, these get more and more specific. So the next one, keeping community members informed regarding city programs, initiatives, projects, and issues. That's an even better rating overall, right? 67% positive. The negative creeps up a little bit, but the gap is still the same. However, the excellent and poor ratio there, right? That's more like a two-to-one, or even better, two-to-one ratio in that one. Delivering services effectively, this feels a lot like the overall rating, 65 to 21, right? It shares a lot in common, maybe a little lower on the negative, a little bit higher on the, I'm not sure how to rate that, because I'm not sure what the city does necessarily. And we move to the next two of these, we get much more middle-of-the-road ratings, but part of that is due to what's happening in the, I'm not sure how to answer your question. So focusing on priorities that matter most to community members, a full 21% said they didn't know how to answer that. So that tells you that they're not paying enough attention to what's happening in the city to give you a rating. When you take the two ratings that are actually rated, you're looking at positive and negative that leans essentially even, but look at the intensity there. The poor is actually where the intensity is on this rating, 14 to 6. And then using tax dollars responsibly, this is the one that is actually positive by about eight points, but once again, you're seeing that don't know, I'm not sure how to answer your question, getting to about a quarter. So the more detailed we get, the harder it is for people to rate that. Generally, it stays positive, but it gets kind of more middle-of-the-road when we get to these last two ratings, when we really ask people to dig in and say, what do they think about it? We've tracked this rating over time, so this is one way that you can sort of say what's been happening to the city of Redmond. The combined excellent and very good ratings have stayed pretty consistent. You look at that curve over time, you could plot a middle line that gets you right around 60-something percent, right? 63 probably is the middle fit there over time. And we actually have rebounded a bit from the 21 ratings, where we had 58 up to 65% down, and the negatives from 31 to 27. That's definitely outside of the margin of error, right? If we're looking at margin of error movements, this is outside of that four point. So it's up seven, and it's down four. So a total of 11-point movement, that's double margin of error. So clearly, there was a difference in movement here between the last time we asked the survey and now of this job rating. So we should feel good about that, that things have improved. If we compare those again to other cities, it was one of the other questions you had for us, how are we doing? A direct neighbor competitor city, competitor city? How do I phrase that? Our neighbors, I guess, we'll put it that way. But when we look at it, we're comparing ratings, in some way, we are competing, so how well do we do? The Kirkland ratings look pretty similar, right? If you look at the intensity of where they are, and you look at the ratings of the excellent to poor, maybe you could have slightly bragging rights in the excellent rating being three points higher, right? And if you look at Burien, a city that's in the region, but in a different sort of economic situation, different residential situation, the ratings look quite a bit different, don't they, right? You look at the negative there, and the negative is actually a majority, essentially 50/50. It's a split there between the two. But it gives you a sense of, all right, a next-door neighbor, how do we feel about the same, but the city, you know, in a different part of the region, it feels very different. And we would be much more happy to be with the ratings we have than what Burien has right now. These are four selections of these same kind of ratings, done on the same scale, excellent, good, only fair, and poor. We're combining the two excellent and good ratings over time to try to understand what has changed. And the one that should draw your attention the most is keeping community members informed. Look at how that has taken a complete turn the other direction for where it was going. If you look at the trend in that one over time, that's the middle rating that we're looking at there, right? The middle graph, keeping community members informed over time. The excellent and good was pretty good for a while, and then it started to drop, and we looked at each other and said, what's happening with this rating? And the last time we tested it, it dropped dramatically. They almost went to even, and then it rebounded in the last two years. I'm not sure what has changed. Maybe you want to talk about that at the end. But that's a clear turnaround, right? Anytime we see a turnaround like that, something fundamental has changed about what's happening in this rating to have that happen. Because the other ratings, you look at them, they're much more consistent over time, right? Either the far-left one, delivering services effectively, has stayed high into the 60s and 70s for most of that period, and the poor has right around 20. The other two, focusing on priorities that matter, has flip-flopped. Every couple of years, all the way back to 2017, stayed really consistent. And then using tax dollars responsibly, a slight turnaround this year as well, a positive turnaround, but not the same degree of keeping community members informed. Okay. One of the things you asked us to ask about is a rating on inclusivity. So we do this on a one-to-five scale. One is not at all welcoming, and five is very welcoming and inclusive. People can choose any number in between there. So they might, after they hear the two ends of the scale, they say, all right, where do I feel like I fit on that scale for me? So we combine these a couple of different ways, and I'm showing you both, 21 on the far left, 23 on the far right. And so welcoming and inclusive of four and five stayed pretty consistent, but it's up three points. Again, statistically, you've already heard me say this, that's not really a change. But if you take the total change, the ones and twos going down three, net six, yes, we are in fact outside of that margin of error. But at the end, you calculate that mean score, it's still about a 3.9. So these are still positive ratings. The vast majority of people are on the positive side, which, if you think about this, the middle rating here is a three, right? So if I'm saying, I'm not sure how to answer your question, I'm going to end up in the middle of the three. About a quarter of people said that, but the vast majority is here on the four and five side, almost two-thirds, right? Right around two-thirds saying four or five, welcoming and inclusive. Now we're going to move into a few more slides, and we'll close out with the previous election questions that you had for us. So we do a series of city functions on an importance rating. So we say, on a one-to-five scale, how important is this thing that we do as the city? And then we put that scale, and we show you a mean score for this. We also show you the extremely important, so that's the five, right? On the far end of the scale, five would be the most important, one would be the least important. So the first thing you'll notice is that that mean score of a three, everything is over three, so everything's important. Everything the city does is some version of important. I'm sure we could find a couple of ratings that you do that would not make the scale, but there definitely is a gap in the difference, especially if you look at the extremely important, right? Look at the difference between the first one, protecting the quality of drinking water, 87% shows it as a five. Go to the one of the last items on the scale, 19% shows it as a five. So it's a huge gap in how important these are when you look at it that way. The end of the mean scale, though, because everyone's on the side of, you know, three and above, you're seeing a lot of things cluster in that same scale rating. So a 4.8 to a 3.3 is not a giant gap, but it really starts to illustrate it more for when you look at the extremely important numbers and how that starts to decline. We hit about a majority of extremely important right in that middle, between protecting our natural environment and creating a climate-friendly community, and utilizing community feedback on priority project decision-making. So we pass a majority of extremely important right there, and we get into much smaller proportions. We're getting to a quarter or less at some of the other items down here on the bottom of the list. So that's how we start it. We say, what's important to you? And then we say, okay, well, how are we doing on these ratings? Overall, we took a mean score of about a 3.7. You take everything and put it together, like if you were going to say, where does the city perform a 3.7 on this rating? You'll notice, if I sort of go back and forth between importance and performance, same scale, right, five points. It means a little bit different here, which is, how are we doing? Your satisfaction is a five if you're very satisfied. If you're very dissatisfied, you're going to be a one. That's sort of the poor side of the rating. So if we look at these, the gap is much closer here, first of all, but also the very satisfied, it's dropping off quite a bit. I think it's hard for people to think about giving a government entity of any kind a really positive rating on some of these. So when we look at some of these, the very satisfied, we're looking at, the break here is about a third. You look at Derby Days, right? That's about the 4.0 mean, about the third or fourth one down there, that's a 33% very satisfied. The other ones above that are some version of, you know, the same amount or more, saying they're very satisfied with it. And then we get into quarters or even less in terms of satisfaction as we've moved down the list. So these are all still on the positive side of satisfaction, right? But they're inching closer to that middle rating for government entities. We often talk about sort of this middle rating being, government's passing grade is like a C. So this is better than a C, right? We're talking about like more B averages and getting close to an A, some of these other top ones, if you look at it from a great point perspective, so. But that gives you a sense of the difference between what's important and how are we performing on these items. So we then asked a few questions about public safety in Redmond. So we started this with, on the left there, how safe do you feel on Redmond? And we can say, very safe, somewhat safe, somewhat unsafe, or very unsafe. And we're looking at two different ratings. On the far left, in general, how safe do you feel in Redmond? On the right, how safe do you feel walking alone in your neighborhoods? These are different qualitative ratings that we're asking people to give us, but the end result is kind of the same. You look at the difference between safety both overall, the two on the left, right, from 21 and 23, these feel like the same ratings, whether I'm talking about how safe I feel overall in the city, or how safe I feel walking alone in my neighborhood. There's some differences, if you look inside of that, of the very safe, between how safe I feel walking in my neighborhood versus Redmond generally. It's not a big difference, but it is a difference enough to notice. You see the same thing in walking alone in my neighborhood, right? When you look at the gap there between the two of those. There's a slight net change here, but really, we're talking about changing within the safe or unsafe, right? Overall, it hasn't really changed all that much in terms of overall ratings. Still very positive. The vast majority of people feeling very safe, and a small proportion feeling unsafe. And the very unsafe is minuscule, right? Like 2%, 3%. But it's still there, so it's still important to note that. This next set of slides talks about public safety resources generally. So on this first one, we were asking the question of, give us on a scale of one to five. One is no need at all, and five is extreme need. Where would you place a city on the need for public safety resources, police officers, firefighters, behavioral health specialists? This is kind of our general way of asking, what do you feel about the measure that we just talked about? This is kind of our lead into that. And if we look at the mean score, if the middle was three, the mean score of 3.4 puts us really close to the middle. That feels very qualitatively different than the other ratings we've looked at. If you think about the importance scale or the satisfaction scale, right? Ending up at a three mean, right about the middle, suggests to you that the need is not as strong as you might think. In fact, the don't know there are 22%. If you take out that, at that measure, it starts to feel more like there's need. You can see a 25% at three, 21% at four, and 15% at five. But the extreme need at 15%, it shows you, we're not close to a majority there. To build a majority, you'd have to get to essentially all the way down to the threes before you can build that majority up. And then if we did the individual ratings, we looked at, what we looked at here was the extremely important for each of these. These are also in about, essentially about a quarter to a third. So we're not seeing a majority here of crisis response centers or helping community members. There's certainly a solid percentage are saying extremely important, but we're not into, if we just sort of flip back here, right? If you remember the, what was extremely important, right? We're into the 70s and 80s with some of these. And here with these, we're into the 30s and 20s with some of them. So it's interesting sort of feedback that we're getting on the public safety programs. So now we're getting to another question you asked us, and there's a lot of math happening here. What I did on the left side was put in the actual ballot text that was on the measure. And then in the middle, we actually asked people, did you vote yes or no to approve the measure? We put those together, we took out the people that said they didn't vote, and the people that didn't know or remembered. We got 53% that said no, which is just about what the ballot measure got, and 47% yes. If you rebase those, right? So we take out the people who didn't vote and said they don't remember, you rebase the two of those, but they prefer not to respond. We're assuming that those are no voters, that, I'm not going to tell you how I did, but maybe you could put them the other way. But we did it that way to say we get to 53% and 47%. So what happened here? There's a series of bullets on this that I wanted to mention to you. So the first thing is that the measure language that we tested back in March 2020 didn't include the 5% annual increase that actually appeared in the November ballot. That's a gigantic change because it builds in an annual increase every year at a time when inflation was the highest it's been in 40 something years, I think, or more. So that was a really big change. We don't test what's going to go on the ballot, you often can get a misleading result, right? So that's, that's lesson number one. Lesson number two connects with that, which is the unpredictability of the economy inflation. When I, when I came to present these results, one of the things I said was, we don't know what 2022 is going to look like. Is it going to get better? Is it going to get worse? If it gets worse, like, we might be in trouble here because we're in shaky economic territory. If things get better, we could be good. A lot of, a lot of entities, public entities, actually passed on putting their ballot measures on in 2022 and said, we're not going to go for all this economic uncertainty. We don't want to get on there. So you pair that with a 5% increase language, we're putting ourselves in a pretty volatile situation of asking for approval. The next part was, there was in fact, an active no campaign, and the former mayor actually wrote an editorial and in the voter pamphlet saying, you don't need the money, that this is a tax increase at an inflationary time. So I think those resonated with people. If you think about giving credibility to a messenger, a former mayor has a lot of credibility in this town. So I think that had a lot to do with it. The yes campaign probably reached voters once. I don't actually know because I didn't talk to the campaign, but looking at the ballot spending, that's probably what they did. That might not be enough to hold support when we have all these other headwinds against us. Our March 22 poll showed a majority in favor, but 35% strongly supporting it, which showed us there was a volatile majority in there that would go, you know, whatever happened, add all these other factors in here, that 32% that leaned, clearly they were swayed against this between March and November. That's a long time to go between those two tests. And then the final one is, our poll didn't test any negative, so we didn't beat it up, right? We didn't say, you know, we didn't claim that the city had the money, whether or not you do, right? We didn't make that claim. We didn't talk about any of the rest of that because this was not a campaign poll. So we just established the ceiling for this. So that's not great news to present to you that that's what happened, but that's what happened, in my opinion, between March and November in terms of the measure. We also follow as up was, what were the reasons to support, to vote yes to approve or no to reject? The thing I want to draw your attention to is, and this is sort of corroborates what I just shared with you, look at the top open-ended reason. Again, open-ended reason why you voted no, the taxes are, it costs too much. So that was the driving factor. 46% of that in an open end. And remember, the biggest open end we had in the beginning of the survey was 25%. So clearly, there's a concentration of that here. Look at the positive side, public safety at 14%. So there's no sort of coalescing yes reason why people are voting for it, right? They're all diffuse, kind of across the board. A general positive at 12, like, does that mean they got the message? Probably not. I don't think they really understood what was in there. They understood it cost a lot. That's what they came away with this from. That has a lot to do with that inflation number and the 5% that was in there, I think. So we've talked about a lot of these, but just to summarize, I'm happy to take your questions. Really good, sort of consistent quality of life ratings. Redmond's a great place to live. We're hearing that sort of over and over again whenever I come to talk to you. The city continues to get high marks for the job it does overall and its core responsibilities. And then some average ratings and some other measures, like using tax dollars responsibly and focusing on priorities that matter. But on balance, these are still one of the positive ratings that we should feel good about. Rates for most city functions remain pretty consistent from past surveys. There's a few exceptions that we noted in there. There's at least some need for public safety resources, but there's low intensity around that. So that part, that sort of jives what we were seeing there in terms of the measure. And I think this comes from the fact that the vast majority of residents see Redmond as safe right now. So there isn't a problem, like, what are we fixing in terms of, in terms of public safety? And then we talked about the series of reasons why the public safety measure likely failed. These are my guesstimates of that, but it's no way to really know without going back and asking people, but that's, I think that's a good guess. That's everything. Be happy to take your questions now. And I know we covered, there's more questions that we, that we didn't cover, so certainly we can go into more detail if you want, but happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. And thanks for addressing all the council's requests. Appreciate that. There was one that sort of struck me, and I'm not going to remember which chart it was, but where you showed where people who responded agreed with the strategies or the priorities. And then later, a few charts later, it said something, does, does this, I don't remember what it said, does the city spend money on the right priorities? And, and the answer was sort of no. How do we reconcile that? That they, that, do they believe that we have these lofty ideals about strategies but actually don't do it? Or do they not understand the question?
I would say it's two things. One, it's really easy to agree with these priorities. They're all positive, right? As you said, do people think we're going in the right direction? I think the answer is yes. In the execution, the question becomes, how do they rate you? The first thing I want, I want to just underscore once again, a full, almost quarter said, I don't know how to tell you how you're doing on these priorities. So there are, I'm sure you've spoken with citizens who live in this town who don't know what you do. They don't pay attention to you at all. They, they live here, but that's it. They don't pay attention to what you're up to. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, this is a challenging question. Focusing on priorities that matter to community members, means a lot of things to different people. So when we say that, if somebody has a park they've been, they've been worried about and you're not delivering on it, then they're upset about it. So if you, but if you look at these ratings, it's still a net positive, but the thing that I go back to is to say, overall, the general feeling is yes, you're going in the right direction. When I get into the priorities, am I be able to answer you? The first question that says, that says 20% can't even answer the question, tells you that the level of detail that people are getting to, it's going to be hard to grasp. They're going to be much more focused on a narrow set of issues and not, as you all have to focus on, a broad scope of what the entire city cares about, right? So that's one challenge with representative government, is how do they understand what you're really doing on a day-to-day basis? Their view is much narrower than the view that you have, if that makes any sense. So it's hard for them to rate that, right? If you, we've done these focus groups in the past with citizens, they talk about all the same issues that you're interested in. They just talk about it in different ways, they don't talk about the same level of detail that you do. Is that, is that how you, those focus groups? Yes? Okay.
So, quick follow-up and specific to what you're saying. So I noticed that when you were talking about the election results, you sort of do a test of, did you vote yes or no? And then, okay, that, that adds legitimacy to the next answers because, you know, it mirrored the polls, right? Do you test people's knowledge in any of these surveys? For example, I get questions all the time about homelessness and, and a majority of people that I talk to think that it's all fentanyl, it's all drugs, it's all addiction. That's not true. We have all kinds of reasons that people don't have homes. Do we ever test the respondents about their knowledge of the city? Just as a validation of, are their answers informed? I, I recognize that that would be a hard thing to do, but I'm just curious, do you ever do that in any of your surveys?
Trying to think of the best way to answer that. This survey attempts to measure a lot of different things that the city does on a detail level. This, these two slides, this one and this, and this one, get the closest to that level of detail that you're asking about. So we give them a specific line item. Now, when I say protecting the quality of drinking water, I know there's probably a lot of programs that the city of Redmond does to make sure that happens. There's a lot of negotiation with King County. There's a whole bunch of, you know, zoning and other regulations you have to do to make sure that the water quality is protected. Can we communicate in that one sentence, all the stuff that you do? No. We can communicate the category and understand, do they feel, is their perception, and again, perception is, is important here because it's their perception of what they think is happening, right? Their perception is it's good. Does that help at all? This is the closest you're going to get to the kind of question you're asking to really get a sense of what they think about you. But it's all perception-based. They're not going to be able to tell you what it is that you do that gets you to protecting drinking water in the city.
No, I mean, it does. Overall, as I, as I think and reflect on all of these answers, I feel like the survey did in fact capture sort of the temperament or the reactions that people have to the city of Redmond. And I think that I feel, based on my anecdotal meeting with people, that that's pretty close. I was just trying to get.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Council Vice President Kretser.
Just a quick follow-up reflection on that. I think it's a good question. And in particular, it's interesting, looking at those, going back to that slide with the, the four job ratings pieces, is that, you know, people are super positive about the way that we're engaging them and keeping them informed, as well as delivering services, but not sure about how our priorities or taxpayer dollars, since most of what we put our priorities and taxpayer dollars, dollars are on engaging them and delivering services, it's more, maybe an interesting question for us on that disconnect of how we share with people, you know, your taxpayer dollars went to delivering these great services that you love, you know? When you go to a park, you're going to, like, that, that was funded by the taxpayer dollars, right? And this is like where we're investing all these different things. Or when we talk about these priorities, they translate into your experience and engagement with the city and support. So I think that's a good reflection for us. One, one question that I had is that I thought it was interesting looking at the information sources. And I remember, I'm trying to remember if it was this survey or a different one that we did, where we saw that during the last several years, there was actually a dip in terms of information that people got from the newsletter. And now obviously, that is the top again. And so looking at that, and then the other piece where people suddenly said that they were feeling more informed in this, I wonder if we can take that to look at the fact that I know we had paused the newsletter for a little while and then we brought it back.
Right.
Like how big of a difference that's made and, and the other communications effort. So yeah, question for, for you, Ms. Smith.
We did pause the, the print and didn't have digital focus during COVID. And we did see a dip in that, although some people did say that they got their information from Focus during COVID. So, but I believe that that is why we saw that dip. But we did bring Focus back in print and digital. I have noticed over the years that consistently those print products have rated high. So print, Focus, and utility bill stuffer have rated higher on how people get their information.
And I think, I think it's just reflecting on that. I think it's powerful to see because sometimes in our digital age, we think that everything can be solved by messaging to people, you know, with, with our digital stuff and put in social media, but that for a majority of our residents, both that, as well as I think it said, like, utility bills and a couple other of the kind of paper things you get in the mail is still what's landing the messages most with our residents. So when we have really important things to get out, just to make sure that we use those as our channels.
A variety of sources and channels that we use, yep.
I want to add two pieces of color to that. It was every city communication that dropped off. So it wasn't just the newsletter. But the last time we tested this, what you were remembering is, any city channel dropped off by a few points each. And part of our theory was that COVID was just distracting people. They weren't paying attention to anything the city was talking about, or less, because they had other stuff to worry about. The other thing, I want to go back to your first point. This conversation you're having about how do people understand what we do, every public agency, city governments are challenged with connecting the dots on what we do to people understanding that you did it. This is, is a perennial challenge in any government, right? Making sure that that thing that you did is recognized as city work because we often take city work for granted, because I just go use the park, I don't think about who is in charge of that. So it is, is a constant challenge, it's never going to go away. And it's, yes, I think that's the way to think about it.
Thank you. As someone who works in the print industry and the narrative of print is dead has been on for years, it's not dead. And this is very much showing that, so I appreciate seeing that as well. Councilmember Stewart, I think I saw your hand.
I had the exact same comments and questions, so I will see the floor. Actually, Councilmember Anderson had her hand up a bit ago.
Councilmember Anderson.
I have a couple of clarifying questions and then maybe another round of questions from others, because I've got a couple others as well. And then just on the topic of communication, I'm really glad to see, this is actually, for those of you who are not sure, because many of you weren't on council, but Mayor Bernie did a lot of this work. She, we didn't have TV when we first started on council, as Mr. Fields and I. We also didn't have, if you may recall, the trials and tribulations of COVID, we didn't have online meetings. So there's a significant amount of external work that's been gone on, and I just want to make sure we acknowledge that. So, well done. And also, the newsletter is also very well done, pretty looking, all that stuff. So glad to see that. On clarifying question, on Q4, the question I had was about, just to clarify here, affordable housing and cost of living and taxes, does that mean specifically property taxes?
I would have to go look. So we have, we actually have a full set of Excel sheet open ends.
Okay.
We take these in categories. I do believe they're all related to taxation of property taxes and cost of living.
Okay. Because I was trying to understand, we do a lot of kinds of taxes, so if that was all in one bucket, 25% doesn't necessarily tell a full story.
But, but also they, you know, the tax, sort of the property tax, they're not necessarily differentiating between your and the state and all the rest of that, so.
Yep, okay, that's really helpful. We've all heard housing is super important. And then there was a question I had on, I think this was Q4, and then Q12 of, so this is the same question, but kind of comparing those two. In Q4, you used the words excellent, good, don't know, I guess.
This one?
I was, I'm just curious if you asked the question with the word, or did you give them a Likert scale?
This one?
This one was, Q12 used one, the scale of one to five, whereas the one. And then the question for question four was a little different. So I'm curious if this is, it's what, it's open-ended. Okay. But we, maybe I'm missing this one here. I had another question, I might have gotten the number incorrect, but I was wondering if you were telling people excellent, positive, don't know. Yep, this is it. Yep. And I was wondering if you were using these words or if you used on a scale of like one to five? So there's a little bit of different.
Yeah. This, this one, the scale is excellent, good, only fair, or poor. The don't know is not read.
Okay.
And neither is not applicable. So we don't say, we don't give them the, the choice to opt out of that.
Okay.
They decide, I don't know how to answer your question, then it's what's called an uncoded response. So we take that and we mark it down, but we don't offer it to them as a choice. So this one is in fact, read that way, excellent, good, only fair, or poor.
Okay. So they are asked to make a qualitative assessment.
Yeah. And we're, we're forcing them to go to one side or the other, right? By writing it as only fair or making it pejorative. So we're making the two, only fair and poor on the negative side, excellent and good on the positive side.
Great.
So we're trying to force them to want the positive side or the other with, with a gradation, right?
Right. In the nicest way possible.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have one more question about the, the public safety levy, but if you want, Ms. Stewart, I have some questions now.
I do have com, please, thank you. I, I do have comments and questions about, well, comments and questions for the body around this new insight on the levy, but I'm not sure if we're planning to do that with Mr. Stewart here, or if that is a conversation for another time, or how you're choosing to do that.
I feel like we have, we have the expertise in the room, we might as well talk about it. I think this is our opportunity to talk about it.
Okay. Sure. I, I found this to be like extremely helpful and I, Mr. Stewart described the 5% annual increase as, I have the quote here, gigantic change. And I, I, 5, 5% is, to hear it characterized as a gigantic change, is, is humbling and is in line with some of the recent thoughts I've had on the matter and the data that we are now seeing, kind of shedding light on an understanding that I've been curious about whether that was the case. So we tested one thing and then grew it over time. So ultimately, we, we sent something to the voters that was much bigger. And that is a huge lesson learned for me. I hope that's a huge lesson learned for the body. Obviously, we're all going to have our own takes on this, but this, it was a really humbling experience. And some of the things I've been curious about lately, the data did support on the reactions to that. So I, it's very, very valuable. Every time you come, what you share with us, I flip back to for months after, and this will no doubt be a place, especially as we move forward and with so many levies happening around us. I guess I'll kick off the conversation with those thoughts. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Anderson.
Thank you for kicking off the questions on the levy. Appreciate it. I'm curious, was EMC part of the 2008 levy at all?
I don't think so.
Okay. So my key question, oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm in, yeah.
You said you had data from 2008, so I was curious on that. Did you ask the question specifically? I saw there's one about the Thrive program, there was like four questions on the Thrive program.
Yeah.
Was there also a question about retaining existing police and fire? Because that was another real big component of the.
I don't think so. As we're talking here, I'm going to pull up the actual question text to see what we asked, but I don't believe that was in there, the way you just worded it.
Great, thank you, that's helpful. And then I was wondering on the, did you get a sense of any kind of economic anxiety? I think you mentioned something about 2022, like there was some uncertainty related to the economy. But now that we've had a significant amount of tech layoffs, I'm curious if there was any of that, that got picked up at all.
That feels very old-school cellphone interference, doesn't it?
It does.
So I'm going back to the open end here. I don't really see any economic concerns registering here at all, right? My guess is that if we, if we looked at sort of economy and jobs, you'd see it just below the threshold of 4%. It's probably somewhere around 3%.
Cost of living taxes is in the bundle.
Yeah. You know, throughout the, throughout the pandemic, Puget Sound generally stayed pretty, a pretty healthy ability to pay for what they needed to pay for. So was I concerned about losing my home? The vast majority of Puget Sound said no. Even tax, most taxes, that didn't include an increase, right? We've had a really good tax performance rating and approvals for the region generally in the last few years. So Seattle Puget Sound felt like a bubble when this COVID, when COVID stuff hit, but it was always this sort of concern out there of what, what might happen. My sense right now is that, is that the tech layoffs are not feeling like any kind of earth-shattering news. It feels like a small correction, I think people are mostly shrugging it off. Whether that affects Redmond more than others because of the concentration of tech, that might be a different story. But, you know, we don't see it registered here. I also think, timing-wise, like, let's think about this, most of those layoffs, January to February, like, those were after that, right?
Yeah.
Mostly like March-ish? Mostly like March-ish?
Yeah.
So yeah, we wouldn't have caught that anyways.
Thank you.
Can we go back to that top of mind chart?
This one. We're trying to figure out who the interference is and I'm trying to figure out if it's me or not.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where the sounds, the busy sounds coming from. You guys are fine.
So I know we're not in Everett, but when I look at Everett and I see affordable housing concern, 8%, and homelessness at 43%, I pretty much think of cognitive dissonance. Like, really? Why are, they must have some reasons to believe white people are homeless in Everett if they don't think it's affordability, so. But you also have sort of the opposite thing in Redmond, where we're concerned about affordability, but homelessness is not like really big on our minds. And also feels a bit of cognitive dissonance.
Our biggest urban cities have seen homelessness and crime and drugs skyrocket in the last three or four years during COVID. If you looked at Seattle before 2019, traffic would have been, and housing affordability was creeping up, the biggest concerns by a long shot. But if you take those two combined, Everett's homelessness and crime, this is done on a 100% scale, right? So you add these up, you get to 100%. They're not separate categories where you can total them up and get to like 150%. So you're already into the 70s in terms of overall concerns. There's not much room left for anything else, right? It just shows you how much in the biggest urban centers that homelessness is dominating, homelessness, crime are dominating the conversation. We just, we did a poll recently in Pierce County where crime was even higher. Crime was into like the 30s and 40s now, and it was overtaking homelessness. It's just, the speed with which this stuff is happening right now and changing is unprecedented. We had traffic was, you could count on it almost being consistent. The East Side, you could count on overdevelopment being the main thing. And then the COVID bubble just changed everything. So, does that help at all?
Yeah, I think so. On this chart, based on what you just said, and I don't think I really thought about that, looking to try to find a relationship between concerns about the cost of living and affordable housing and homelessness, I'm not going to find it on this chart. I may find it on a different chart.
Yeah, I was thinking back to your, one of your original comments about homelessness generally. And when the homelessness crisis started, we were doing a bunch of work on that question. There was initial, initially this sort of, this feeling of compassion, these people, this is no fault of their own. That was the sentiment at the time. The longer that homelessness has gone on, the more it's metastasized, the more it's become about these other issues. People won't move, they're taking up free space, they're taking drugs. It's become more negative because the problem doesn't seem to get solved. So I think it's sort of a change in mindset from, I'm going to be charitable and forgiving, to I can't do this anymore, right? And now I'm going to sort of, I'm going to cast blame. That's what it feels like. Now, you're right, none of that's in that chart. This is all me sort of piecing together what the last six years have looked like. But when I see those numbers, that's what I see. And Redmond, it's not as in your face as it is in other places. If you go to Everett, you go to downtown Everett, downtown Seattle, it's still very much in your face, so.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. It's really helpful to think about the responses in which, as you characterized it, folks aren't paying attention enough to be able to give us an answer. And I wonder, from your perspective, if we should think of those numbers as possibly higher or lower. Reason being, if you don't have enough, if you haven't paid attention enough, you simply ignore the postcard. So is it an undercount probably to say that 1 in 4, 1 in 5 aren't paying attention enough to give us opinions on some matters?
So I think it's important to remember the word perception in this. Everyone...
Sure, perception is their own reality.
Some version of that. And so even if they don't have a ton of data to go on, and they feel like they're going to give you a rating, right? How informed is that really?
Okay.
So there is definitely some messiness in here of, people have a perception of what's happening that might be inform of what's happening around them. I think all you have to do is look at the measure to say, we went from a really positive place in March and things dramatically changed. Something happened between those, and there was a perception of what's happening between those two, right?
Sure, thank you, yeah. It's hard to, or easy to forget the details that we spend Tuesday nights on. We do not expect others to have.
Every week. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So back to Mr. Field's conversation about homelessness and I think there is some cognitive dissonance here, but it's not in our survey. It is between the response that different cities employ to the problem. We have an integrated strategy that I believe works very well, and everybody's on board with it. And everybody does what they're expected to do when they're expected to do it. When you notice something, people call. They let, you know, our dispatchers know that there's an issue. Our officers respond. They get the right people involved. Good things happen typically from responses like that. Whereas this is not what happens in even Bellevue, from the looks of the survey, and certainly not in Everett and Seattle. Although I do think that Everett is recently changing their minds about this because they simply can't have it anymore. They're, I think people are fatigued about what they see in their community. And it's not compassionate to have people living on the streets, you know, basically doing themselves in, whether that's with drugs or other vices. But, so I think it wholly relies on, when we look at our survey versus others, the response that we have versus the response that other cities are employing. And I would be willing to bet that if we had Auburn's kind of survey results, we would see it very much in line with ours. And we know why, because they have the same kind of strategy that we do for homeless, addressing the homeless issue in our community. And so I think it's about mindset. It's, it is a cognitive dissonance, though. I agree with you on that. It's just, it has to do with this body versus the bodies that represent those folks in other communities.
Council Vice President Kretser?
Just another thought on the affordable housing. I think one takeaway for me is when we think about the things that we prioritize as a council and that we're working on, that hearing from our community that the issue around housing affordability is top, says to me that that's good because we are, have, we have been focusing a lot of energy on it, right? And we're continuing to, and it should help to guide us. Because I think there is a piece, from what I would see in terms of affordable housing, you know, when we're not just talking about people who are, who might, if they can't find affordable housing, are going to end up without housing, but more the question of, can people living in our community feel like they can afford to stay here? Maybe they have to move to other communities or other places because the cost of living is becoming so high. And that's the second part of that kind of lumped together piece. So I guess the takeaway for us is thinking more about, you know, can people from a lot of different walks of life live in our community and have the housing choices that they need to be able to live here and to stay here? And for longtime community members or more recent community members, do they have those housing choices? So I think it validates the work that, in the discussions we've been having about providing a variety of housing choices and kind of addressing this need, as well as addressing other issues around cost of living, like, you know, childcare affordability and some of the other things that we often talk about. So interesting to look at these readings and think about that.
Thank you. And I would say to piggyback off of that, the affordability of staying here, I think is, for me, what I saw playing out in the levy conversation about, and it was no surprise to me that the tax amount came out as the biggest reason to vote no. Because that was one of the biggest things that I was hearing, was folks saying that they're already stretched thin and worried about being able to stay in the community in general. So I think those, seeing all this information together, for me, it all just kind of clicks. So I appreciate the hard work that went into getting this survey and all the feedback you've taken from us and the questions that we kind of guided and to make this happen. So I think that we've got some really good information to continue forward with our work and appreciate all of this information. Are there any final questions on this topic? Councilmember Fields?
Not a question, comment. So Councilmember Anderson correctly described how the city and pointed out Mayor Bernie, both as council and as mayor, has made a great effort to expand our communication and our reach. And I agree with that. And I actually think that a big part of it was new council members doing a lot of door belling, finding out what the city, what the residents of the city were feeling shortchanged on. And at that time, there was in fact a fairly collective voice saying, we don't know what you're doing. And I think the city responded to that, both to the residents and the new council members that have come on and said, we need to do better. And I think that that's great. I'm also going to put a plug in for, we are on the cusp of getting new information IT systems, which will advance our understanding of our own work, both internally and externally. And I think, to your point, that we can never really satisfy what the government does. I think that Redmond has an opportunity to really do a lot better because we have the mindset and we will soon have new tools. So yes, we are not going to get there, but we're going to get better.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, just a final comment. I just wanted to follow on with Councilmember Field said. I think, you know, from the bigger picture, from getting the survey results back, is thinking about how do we connect what the work that we all do with taxpayer dollars and the priorities itself, and maybe make a tighter message with that so people can make the connections. We don't have to, we can, we can help them make it. We don't have to guess that they're going to make it. So I appreciate all the comments tonight, it's very helpful.
Thank you. And I will share that Councilmember Fields and I had a meeting earlier with Ms. Cochran about exactly that for financial reporting. So there may be some changes and updates coming that we will see in some of that information as well to kind of connect all those dots. All right, thank you so much. Thanks for joining us tonight. Move on to our second item on the agenda. That is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Budgeting Process Recommendations. Seraphie Allen will be introducing this item, joined by Lorraine Hamilton and the team. Lots of team. We're going to take a five-minute recess, so that will work out perfectly. We will, let's go ahead and say we'll be back at 8:05. Thank you so much. Deputy Director Allen, I will hand it over to you. We are back in session.
Thank you. So we are squeezed in here, so don't mind my leaning over. So greetings, council. This item, agenda item, will be presented by Jackie LeLaur, our Economic Development and Tourism Program Administrator. Per Redmond Zoning Code, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, also known as LTAC, is charged with making recommendations to the council on how to invest lodging tax funds to attract visitors to Redmond. Tonight, staff will present on three Lodging Tax Budgeting Process Recommendations. With these recommendations, staff is seeking discussion and direction on next steps for moving forward. And I also just want to point out that we have a guest with us today. Actually, technically two guests, although Lorraine is always with us. And just want to thank them, thank them for joining us at the table and acknowledging that this might be a hard discussion, but really appreciative of all the collaborative work that has gone into it and really hope we can be helpful in your discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Jackie for the presentation.
Thank you, Seraphie. Thank you, council, for having us here today. Again, we are all friends and we're here to have a difficult discussion and we're excited to have it and sort of get direction. So I just want to introduce, I think you introduced most of the people up here, but Philly Marsh is our Economic Development Manager. As you know, Lorraine Hamilton's also joining us because there's implications for her department. And then Melanie Lanthorne, who I am very thrilled was able to join us today, is the Redmond Marriott General Manager. But she's one of our LTAC members and she brings a lot of very vital information to that team. So thank you for taking the time to be here. In order to address council's questions from the last meeting, this presentation will include a review of the requirements for this fund, a look at local tourism industry trends, a review of the historical and recent fund allocations, and a summarization of peer city research. In addition, I will speak to LTAC's desired outcomes for the recommendations that were put forward, and I'll provide an analysis on the impacts of these recommendations. If possible, due to the amount of information, I'm hopeful we can hold questions to the end. And with that, I will begin. A very quick reminder, council asked if the LTAC could review the percentages that had been put in place in 2005. These are the percentages that are used for the fund, so that 1% fund. And these are how that fund is supposed to be spent. What the LTAC did with that ask is they took three meetings and they took an in-depth view of these percentages. And what that included was a historical review of the fund and the allocations, a review of the hotel and tourism industry as far as how it's looking, how the recovery is looking, and what the overall trends are looking like, a review of six neighboring cities and their lodging tax expenditures, as well as how they do the process of budgeting. We had a guest speaker, which was Lorraine Hamilton, the Parks Director. And we also had our guest speaker from Bullseye Creative. That is the marketing agency that runs the Experience Redmond brand. A few very fast reminders for you. This fund is generated from a 1% tax on hotels and motels. And through state law, RCW, it is required that it is used for very specific purposes. Those purposes are, one, tourism marketing; two, special events designed to attract tourists; and three, tourism-related facilities, which is generally a welcoming center or visitors bureau. We as staff have to report on specific metrics to the state. I do this annually. These are some of those metrics. I can answer questions if there's anything about how we report out on that. Taking a quick look at the hotel industry and the tourism industry as a whole, we use multiple metrics and graphs. I just wanted to bring one to council for you. It's the occupancy graph. If you look at this, black is 2019, this line at the top. This is pre-pandemic. If you look at those two bright green dots, that's where we're at today and we're tracking with last year. We're pretty much in line with 2022. What you'll notice here is there's a clear shoulder season, what we call the slower seasons in the tourism industry here in our local area. That's the Q1, January, February, March, sometimes April. And then Q4, October, November, December. Those summer months are really propped up by... Those summer months are really propped up by leisure travel, sporting travel, specifically in Redmond. We have really great soccer tournaments that bring thousands of people. This is important leisure travel for us. What you may notice is there's still quite a large gap from where we were pre-pandemic. We still have a problem with business travel not being where it was, so that's a market share that was discussed within the LTAC meetings. We have an expert here tonight in this area, Melody, so if you do have questions about trends, even specifically to the Marriott, she's willing to share what that's looked like and what some of those challenges are. I want to take a look at the revenues that have come in. You can see how this fund was growing before the pandemic. You can see what happened during the pandemic. This fund can be pretty volatile. And what we did with the estimates that we made for 2022, we made those following the Omicron variant that came out. So we did end up well above that, thankfully. Unfortunately, we're still quite short from where we were even in 2018. So as far as this fund, it's not where we need it to be. It has been problematic for us in needing to use that N Fund Reserve, which I will show you. This is a new graph that you haven't seen before, this presentation. This is something Finance put together for us, and this is a bit of the cash flow, a look at the cash flow from this fund. The green are the revenues that came in for that specific year. The blue are the expenses that were going out. And that yellow line up top is that N Fund Reserve, N Fund Balance, internally, we kind of call that the Reserver Contingency Fund. And I think it's important to note that we actually commit to dollars going out the door from this fund a year before they come in the door. So I come to you usually in the fall of the year before they're coming in the door and asking you to approve grants and the parks money. So keep that in mind. We commit to money before we see what comes in. And so that's where that N Fund Reserve has been really important for this fund. When those revenues in 2020, '21, and '22 did not meet the expenses that were going out the door, we had to pull from this N Fund Reserve. As far as the budgeting process and how that would be different with the recommendations that are put forward, we can talk through that as well. But as you know, I come to you at a certain part of the year, we talk through the grants and the, essentially, the events money. We would do the same thing. It would be through the budgeting process. There would no longer be percentages in place. So it would be sort of a what makes sense to put where sort of discussion instead. So that would be the difference if these recommendations were accepted. I wanted to give you an actual budgeting example of how this fund works. So we know that $487,000 came in this year. If we stuck to these percentages that were outlined in 2005, this is what the money going out the door would have looked like. So just take a quick second, and then I will show you what we actually spent for this year. So you can kind of compare how, we don't necessarily stick to these percentages at all times. So here's the actuals. A couple of points I want to note here is, one, the administrative work that's being done is right now being paid for by one-time ARPA funds through 2024. After that, we will have to figure out how to pay for that work. This fund only gives 2% to that work, so keep that in mind. And number two, this Council knows we put a lot more than 9% towards the grants. That is something this Council and the LTAC has purposely wanted to do, and Council has always agreed with that, or at least in the past few years. And so this has been problematic in needing to draw down from that N Fund Reserve. If you add these percentages up, they're at 121.5%, and what that means is we have to continue to go to that reserve to pull from it. I want to give a very quick summary of what we found when we spoke to six neighboring cities. One, every city is unique, so just keep that in mind. We are unique. We are Redmond. We have our own strengths, right? So this was a comparison we used as a data point, but we know we are unique. And so just in general, what we found, these are the findings from six cities that did get back to us. All cities contacted did not use percentage-based budgeting. We did not find that as a regular use of how you would manage this fund. What we did find is they used their regular budgeting process. So they, for us, it would be evaluated every couple of years. That budget would be put in front of Council. One other city did give lodging tax funds to their city events, and that was in the amount of 7% of their 2022 revenues. For us, we budget 39%. On average, the other cities gave 32% to their tourism grants. Redmond budgets 9%. On average, other cities gave 42% to marketing. We budget 50. Other cities gave around 13% to administrative work. We budget 2%. And then this area of the facilities, other cities gave 11% in that area, and that was if they had a visitors bureau or a welcoming center. This is an area the LTAC has expressed interest in looking at with Light Rail coming. But as of right now, with the way the percentages are broken up, they don't have the flexibility necessarily to maybe look at these new opportunities unless we were to pull from the reserve or get a little creative. And then the other piece to keep in mind, as many other cities do have an N Fund Balance practice in place, that ranged from having a 50% of annual revenues to 100%. The recommendation before you is 100%. Of course, Council can amend that if they choose or not approve, but that is the reason that recommendation came forward. It was something that wasn't abnormal to have in place. The desired outcomes and considerations from the LTAC, number one is they wanted to strengthen Redmond as a tourism destination to drive overnight stays and local economic impact to the businesses. Number two, there is a lot of discussion about capturing business travel market share. And number three, this was actually probably the most extensive discussion, was to invest in new opportunities to increase tourism stays during the shoulder season, that Q4-Q1. This last year, we had to stop all recruitment of events for tourism grants because we didn't have enough money, and that was concerning to the LTAC. And that's why they have wanted to look at these percentages. This has been a discussion for a long time. Unfortunately, COVID has made this a discussion we can't not have, and that's why we're here today. If you're interested in some of the specific examples of what the LTAC discussed, they're in, these are just a few of them in the blue box. Melody could also speak to some of that. She's been on many boards outside of the LTAC as well that have done this work, and those were some of the discussions we had in the meeting. The formal recommendations were unanimously passed of the present members. That was five to zero. I'll just briefly run through them. One was the LTAC recommends that the lodging tax budgeting process is no longer percentage-based, but instead follows the City of Redmond's biennial budgeting process starting in 2025. Number two, the LTAC recommends an N Fund practice of maintaining a target balance equal to or greater than the average annual funds, fund revenues. And number three, which is dependent on number one being approved, the LTAC realized that this could be concerning to remove those assurances, and so they put this one forward for transparent reasons. The LTAC recommends that the City of Redmond seeks alternative funding sources for signature events and cultural arts programming outside of the lodging tax fund. Let's talk quickly about some of the impacts of these considerations. I know there's the obvious one, but let's sort of briefly touch on all of them. Number one, remove percentage-based budgeting from our budgeting process with this fund. What the LTAC was really looking for here was some more flexibility to look at other options of how to spend this fund. It would also provide the opportunity to continue to fund tourism grants at the level or higher than we have, at a higher level than we have in the past. Unfortunately, the problem here that we're looking to address and have a discussion about is it does remove specific assurances to certain items such as signature events and arts programming. Number two, the N Fund practice of maintaining annual revenues. Essentially, what they were looking for here is to create an agreed-upon practice for managing and maintaining an N Fund balance. And then thus, this would allow for the reserve fund to be used and maintained should revenues not be met, which is exactly what happened during COVID. I think another piece to note here is this fund can actually be used to invest in other things. It doesn't need to just be an emergency fund, right? We can use this fund for investment opportunities. It would limit the allowance to drop the N Fund balance below whatever is agreed upon. However, we could go through a process of getting approvals with Council should we need to do that for any reason. And then recommendation three, seek alternative funding sources for signature events and cultural arts. If approved, this recommendation would remove that 39% assurance to parks, I'm sorry, to signature events and cultural arts programming. They could still apply for a tourism grant. It's not likely they would get that level of funding if they were just put in the bank of all the other events. So it's important to keep that in mind. Right now, they're given about $150,000 the last couple of years. That equates to approximately 43% of the Redmond Lights budget, 29% of the Derby Days budget, and 15% of the cultural arts programming budget. I think Director Hamilton also said you could just equate that to 40% of both of those budgets if you wanted to simplify it. But these are the specific metrics from each of those budgets. I want to quickly go through each recommendation. Council has the option to approve, not approve, or not approve and amend. And so some items here that might be of note is such as that N Fund practice. I think it was brought up that why do we have that? I hope that I was able to explain that a little bit. But if 100% feels like too much to have, Council has the option to look at, you know, setting a dollar amount if they wanted to have something in place, setting a lower percent of the revenues coming in. What the LTAC was thinking is we typically are going to spend what we're going to bring in, and so maybe we need to maintain that. But again, the Council has a variety of options here. And then with this third consideration, I'm sorry, this third recommendation of that signature events and cultural arts piece, what's important to note here is that should Council feel like that is too much to ask to take that funding away, it's possible that the Council could choose to earmark a certain dollar amount for this purpose and maybe not a percentage, right? So perhaps there's a dollar amount that feels okay. Maybe there's no longer a percentage. That could be on an ongoing basis or a limited amount of time. If we choose to change that, we come back to this process. So those are some of the options that Council has. What I do want to say is, again, thank you for your time. I do want to remind the Council that the intention here was that if any recommendation is taken, it wouldn't happen until the 2025 budget. We start that process in about a year, I think. We started pretty early. And so we're looking for direction tonight from the Council on how you'd like to proceed with these recommendations. As a starting point, I can take us back to that impact slide, just so they're all up there, but we can go to any slide you prefer. We can open it up for questions of all the staff here as well as Melody. So I hope that was a pretty decent overview to start with questions.
That was a great overview. Thank you so much. I think first, if we could get to any follow-up questions we have on the information that was provided before we get to the considerations, I think that's how I'd like to handle the discussion to kick us off. So any follow-up questions? Yes, Ms. Anderson.
And this question is for Director Hamilton. Does the parks funding that's currently provided by LTAC provide ongoing or one-time money? Whether or not it's how it's used, just how does it, how does it, how does it come into the parks for like Derby Days or something like that?
It comes in, we, we actually have to submit documentation for what we do and it comes back to us. So we don't get it until we have proven that we've used it for an approved LTAC purpose. So it's a one, one time, but because of how it's written in, it's ongoing.
Okay, so it's like a city's grant to itself?
Okay. Sorry, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand, like, I understand you're, you're using this account for that purpose.
How does it appear in my budget?
What does it pay for staff?
No, it does not pay for staff.
Okay, and it's for mostly one-time?
It is for the event costs themselves.
And is it relatively stable over the past several years about the amount that you've been, that Parks Department has been getting?
It, yes. It has varied here and there because they attempt, have attempted to make it based on the percentages. And I know Jackie has pulled those numbers. I just looked at them. They're relatively between about 150 and 200. But 150 has been a really sufficient number for us this year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer.
So I'd like to learn a little bit more about the proposal to be able to tie the process to the biennial budget. Right now, we do yearly decisions, I think, on, on this. And how would that affect it, especially given on the community events that get proposed? What's the vision for exactly how that, that would work for those who might want to apply each year, new events that might pop up year over year?
That process would not change. So what we do is, let me back up a little bit. Right now, when we do this budgeting process, we say, okay, what do we expect to come into the fund? What's 39%? What's 2%? We go through each of the percents, and that's what we put in the budget, and that's what you see. Lately, we know we're going to spend more on grants, and so we actually put an additional amount in there, and we assume we're going to have to use that N Fund Reserve. What this process would do is it would essentially get rid of the percentages, and now it would be whatever we want to go through with that budgeting, what looks fair, what makes sense. Do we put 2%, do we put more percent? Do we put, you know, less percent in certain areas? But we always have to come back to this Council each year for the granting program. Right now, I know I have $150,000 set aside for that granting program, so when we take in all those applications, that's what the LTAC's looking at. Okay, we have $150,000. How do we want to spend it here? And then I bring that to you. So what that budgeting process does is it sets that limit that we're going to give during the applications. That process would not change for you at all. However, if you, we also bring to you the parks piece so that signature events and cultural arts, they just ask for what we think is going to be 39%, and that's what also comes to you at that time. If you accept these recommendations, I don't know how that process would change, right? Because that's a piece that would obviously have an implication. So as far as the grants, that process won't change at all for you.
Okay, so, so the idea would be that we would basically allocate the line items of the pots of money during the biennial budget process to say this much will go to community events, this much. So we could have a line item that would say this much to city events?
Yes.
Out of that, out of the fund if we were to switch to that particular category. Okay, thank you. And one, one other question. So, you know, some of the pieces that, that were highlighted of the needs for more funding in this area were around marketing or additional kind of other tourism-focused activities that I understand the Tourism Promotion Authority probably could fund as well. So I am curious to know how much revenue that is expected to generate, especially given that that will be completely directed by the tourism, by the hotel industry. They'll be sitting on that board directing all of those funds. And I guess when we asked this question originally, part of my thought was around that. That, I think this came up maybe when we were actually talking about that, this, this question of like, how do we think about this other set of revenue that's going to go towards, or potential tax revenue that could go towards similar goals? And when I was thinking about the percentages in the budget, I was really looking at that marketing piece, which I guess my other question is, I think in our city budget right now, we augment some of the marketing with additional general fund revenue. Or is it just that we, because I remember having a discussion about the marketing part of the budget and that sometimes it doesn't get completely covered by LTAC, so that the city engages in that, but maybe I'm not, not right on that.
No, I can't think of anything in this last budget cycle that might have related to the marketing. You might be thinking of a bundled request of ARPA funding that we had around recovery that related to supporting small businesses and providing some promotion for them, but that's very different than.
It would have been separate from the LTAC. But yeah, I feel like we were discussing kind of marketing for the city and for small, and for businesses in general. So anyway, go back to the Tourism Promotion Authority. I'm curious to know a little more about that.
Billy can answer that one.
Think about it in this context.
So the tourism promotion area is still in the process of establishment, and it is separate from the tax. It is an assessment. So it's a $2.50 assessment on each hotel room. A early projection is about 1 million that would, could be raised for the City of Redmond for that. But as you mentioned, it's going to be, it's a separate governing board. Through this establishment process, an advisory board made solely of ratepayers will be established, and they will be developing the work plan and budget. Removing the percentages in the LTAC budget would actually allow for a little bit more flexibility in aligning with that TPA work plan and budget. The LTAC-funded city tourism marketing consists of the Experience Redmond brand and that marketing strategy. But there's not currently, I would say, funding available for larger advertising strategies. So what we've seen other TPAs do is use kind of that base brand that's funded through LTAC and then be able to amplify that to larger advertising buys and campaigns to really attract those tourists from 50 miles or more away. The TPA could also invest in larger event attraction, so that's another piece. Some TPAs do that. They actually. that's another piece. Some TPAs do that. They actually invest quite a lot of dollars to bring large national events to their, to their destination. So I, I think when that does become established, and we start seeing funding flow in, and we start seeing what that work plan is, then we would want to see if there's possibility to have flexibility to, to better align the strategies and the investments made between these two different tourism products into one unified strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got the trigger.
I just wanted to add to that. I think if I'm getting to the heart of what your question was, I think, as Philly said, it does allow flexibility for us to look at. I am curious, Melody, if maybe you want to share the, one of the reasons why I think the LTAC was unanimous in some of these recommendations, was because of how hard the industry is being hit. So right now, right, where the flexibility they're asking for is we need to spend more on marketing or on these things that are bringing people in from 50 miles more or away, is when you have this other fund, you might be able to have more flexibility to maybe offer other kinds of things. But I think right now, what we're really hearing from them is that they're really needing as much going to that as possible. So I just wanted to maybe give you a chance, Melody, to share a little bit about that.
Okay. Thank you. So the parks and recs that we are contributing to right now, they really don't put heads in beds. So when we see those events, they're great to have, and they're super cool to have, and there's a lot of foot traffic, but they aren't driving any kind of occupancy into the hotel rooms. So with the LTAC, the understanding is from mine that we try to put money towards getting people here. And things have really, really changed. Redmond, from a hotel standpoint, is not recovering the way the rest of the country is, and it is mostly due to high-tech sector and the number of layoffs that we've had. So my particular business, pre-pandemic, you know, we had 115 employees, and now we have like 80 employees. And those 80 employees are working three and four-day work weeks. I have five open management positions. I'm looking at layoffs right now. We are running 20 and 30% occupancy. In 2019, at the same point of time, we were running 60% occupancy. We will miss our budget this year by $4 million, and we will miss 2019 by $7 million. So what I have stressed is that we really need a platform to find business that's different and new. And my particular company, we're trying to diversify. So we're looking at businesses that are in Bothell, and we're pulling in, it's been really great, actually. We've pulled in some, they're much smaller accounts. So we're working a lot harder for less business at lower rates and lower occupancy, but it's neat because we've won some business. So there's some medical sectors that are out in Bothell that we've been able to pull over. There's also the aerospace that's kind of all along, you know, Woodinville, Redmond, and we've been able to work harder on those accounts to try to pull business over. And yes, the soccer tournaments are great, but the, the big accounts, they are producing 30% of what they produced in 2019. And when we negotiated with them for next year's pricing, they're saying, expect the same, if not worse. So they are not planning to bring travel back, although they might be saying, hey, we're going to office here again. Just because you're in the office, it doesn't bring people naturally to travel. So if they're saying we're only doing essential travel right now, they really aren't doing travel. So we just, this weekend, we have this great program. It's 60 rooms for three nights, and we pulled it from Bellevue. And it's a hoops tournament, and it's business we've never had before. So instead of running 12% occupancy this weekend, we'll run 60% occupancy. And that's the best weekend we've had since November of last year. So it's not a really, really pretty scenario for us. So that, that's kind of one of the folds of why I made some recommendations, like, hey, what we've maybe always done isn't really working for us. And I network with the other general managers in town, and we're all feeling the same pains, the same pains of, you know, no business, and then really hard to find staff as well. So then when you do have the business, you're struggling. Right now, I have six housekeepers, and last night, we were on 70%. And for 70%, I should have 20 housekeepers. So I have a manager that did 100 boards today, which means she went in there and changed the bathrooms and did all the stuff for 100 rooms, and that's unheard of. So it's not a super easy time in our industry right now. And we want to be able to contribute to this fund, contribute to the other fund, but we have to grow our occupancies to do that. And right now, because we're percentage-based, we're giving you less because our average rates are actually lower than 2015 right now. So we've gone backwards several feet just to be, you know, in the game. We're, we're a little bit lucky this summer. Cruise boat season looks really strong in Seattle, and then they've got the Major League Baseball. And because of that, there's several corporate groups that are looking at us that wouldn't normally look at us because we're, A, we can take them, we want to take them, and we're a little bit lower rated than Seattle's saying $400 a night. And, you know, we're saying, okay, 279 a night, you know, big difference. So that is a little bit of the scenario that we're facing right now. And with the new tax coming in, that board hasn't been formed. We're not exactly sure who's going to be on the board, and then where will we put those funds and how will we use those funds? But I think we're needing to look at markets that we've never looked at before to try to drive business, whether it's group or new business. I saw an article yesterday that those Microsoft buildings up on 148th, they're, actually, they own them, but they're going to lease them to other companies, and they're not going to bring people back into those. So here's an opportunity for us. Who's going in those buildings? I reached out to one Redmond yesterday to say, hey, any intelligence on that? So we can try to dig it up. But right now, we are really struggling for business.
Thank you, Melody. Yeah, I just wanted to help provide the context for that ability to flex on both sides as things are going.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, it'll, like, two years from now, this is going to be a whole different story, but right now, it's, it's not great.
Thank you for that in-depth look into your world. It answered actually a lot of the questions I had written down, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Fields, I think Councilmember Stewart had her hand up first, and then Councilmember Fields.
Okay, thank you. Director Hamilton, your team puts on our essential signature events. They are beloved, and the direction from this council, for the most part, has been to go bigger. The drone show was something that was sponsored by Council President Forsyth last year, is something we would love to see back. We've had conversations about growing that event. So could you speak to the impact that a change away from the percentages would make to your ability to plan for the future?
Yes, I'd be happy to speak to that. So I would like to state that moving away from a percentage-based is actually not what would impact these events. And I want to be really clear that while the Parks Department holds these events, these are not Parks Department events. These are city signature events that are driven through direction from city leadership, from city council, from collaboration throughout our city, staff, and community engagement. So I do want to be really mindful that while we get to be the ones who have the really awesome fun job of putting these events on, they're not parks events. They are city events. So this percent, moving away from the percentage-based is not what would impact. Moving away from allocating in the range of where we are right now will have impacts. I think that there's been conversations around, well, you know, even in these recommendations and kind of the options that city council has, one of them is, well, we could put an enhancement forward in the next budget cycle to find this money. We could do that, but we're talking in the, in the range of $300,000. Genuinely, there's not $300,000 within our budget that can be reallocated into events. And genuinely, if city council were to ask me, well, then what would you not do? I would say I would reduce events because we don't have the space within our operating budgets to pull out this type of money and not impact the things like safety in our parks, because really, that's where it comes. We can't pull out of something like the Recreation Activity Fund. That's a restricted fund that we can't utilize for events. So we would be looking at things in the general fund. And frankly, I don't have anything left in the general fund to pull from. So really, what it would look like is a 43% reduction at Redmond Lights, which would do away with a lot of our artwork. It would do, which is one of the biggest draws for that event. It would do away with things like the blinkers. It would do away with live performances, and it would probably reduce the time period that that could be. For Derby Days, it really would not allow us to have things like the drone show, which was a huge draw for us this year, because if we, even if we were able to receive that level of sponsorship that we did last year, which I'll just say we're not on track to receive this year, because the same things that Melody is speaking to that are impacting their industry are heavily impacting the events industry as well. A lot of our sponsors who were previously committed have gone dark on us and have not committed for this year. So we really are already having to be really creative. And so things like Derby Days would not have the drone show. We would not be able to expand bike racing or bike rides. We would not be able to, it may impact our ability to stand up a robust main stage, and it could impact the number of days that the event is. That being said, whenever we start to reduce out programmatic elements, it reduces our reach, it reduces our impact, which then reduces our income and our revenues, which would further reduce out, it gets, it becomes a trickle-down effect. And then for cultural arts programming, it would not allow us to do initiatives, such as the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, which is happening this year. And the goal of that is to work with local businesses, to bring people into the city, and to experience art within our downtown corridor and frequent our local businesses. And I will say, you know, the Parks Department, for a lot of years, has received this money. I can't speak prior to 2019. That's when I came to the city. And, you know, I had a great conversation at the LTAC meeting that I was invited to, and one of the questions, I don't know if it was Melody or if it was another member of LTAC, one of the great questions that was asked was, have you guys ever considered doing some sort of a bundle for a weekend of Derby Days or for Redmond Lights to encourage people to come and stay? And I said, actually, no, we've never done that. We've never really had that conversation, but I think it's an incredible idea. And so one of the things I said is, I would love to figure out those types of solutions so that we can also be true to our word around this fund and around the hoteliers. We want to help them be successful too. So I guess what I would say is, we would love to be a part of those solutions. I would love to be given the opportunity to be successful in that. And that's because this really is going to have a significant impact on the reach of those events. So I hope that answered your question.
And more, both of you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I like the idea of packaging, say, if you do bring back the bike races, cyclists like to stay in hotels, and that could be a very big draw to getting people to actually stay in our hotels and participate in some sort of regional bike experience. Mayor Bernie?
Thanks. I'm, I'm just trying to listen to the whole conversation. And thank you so much for sharing the situation that the Marriott is in. It's a beautiful hotel. We would love to see it full, and I appreciate you sharing the struggles that you're in right now with all of that. I think that, as you mentioned, I think this is an opportunity to think a little bit differently about the way we have always done things. I think doing, probably doing a better job with the city partnering with our hoteliers to figure out what are opportunities to get heads in beds for other programming, be it arts, be it bike racing, be it Derby Days, be it Redmond Lights, whatever it might be, or other city events that we're having as well, I think might be a really great investment of some of those dollars. I think you're looking at, like, can we put more money into, is it one of the organizations that help us out with getting heads in beds? Experience Redmond or, or other kind of marketing opportunities? I think that that might be a more interesting route to go, to be honest, with the funds that we do have in order to really jump-start things. I think once people see what a great community Redmond is, they will continue to come back. I think that there's some marketing opportunities there. I think, I talked to you like a couple of months about some of the things I was thinking about, that we're just, I think that we're not taking advantage of yet. I would hate to see us reduce the amount of money that things like Derby Days or other signature events of the city, because I think that has a long-term impact that is part of the character of Redmond. And it would bring fewer people in later on, because they would think, well, they don't really do anything that interesting in Redmond. It's just for this tournament or whatnot. So I think that there are some bigger long-term impacts, but thinking about this creatively, I think, is probably a better option for everyone involved, rather than just sticking with what we've done in the past. Thanks.
Is getting some, one of those weekend package things, something that would be available to happen this year for Derby Days? Do you have time, lead time? I got a nod in the back of the room.
My, my new deputy, by the way, this is my new deputy, Zach. I haven't gotten to officially announce him yet. He's giving me a nod that he believes that that would be, I think, if it's something that people are wanting to explore and hoteliers are hoping to explore this year, we could absolutely begin to work with our economic development team and Experience Redmond and the appropriate partners.
Yeah, and this is one, I turned it off. Tricky one. This is one of the nice things of us starting this conversation early, rather than waiting until the budget 2025, 2026, so that we can maybe come back to you next year and say, you know, how well did this work? What could we improve on? Things like that. So I'll just say yes.
Thank you. Lots to consider here. Councilmember Fields, I think you had your hand up.
Lots been said since then. I got to try to remember. So I do want to appreciate Director Hamilton pointing out that there are three recommendations up there, and it's the third recommendation that we're talking about that potentially, potentially has an impact on our signature events. If you look closely at those recommendations, I don't think that there's been, from, from our guests and from staff, I don't think there's been a whole lot of disagreement that moving to a discrete budgeting format is the issue. The third recommendation, the one that we're sort of talking about impacts, I want to be real clear that I sat in the meeting, and I, and I mentioned this a few weeks ago. There was a lot of empathy, a lot of concern, a lot of desire to maintain and those signature events. Those people who were there have an interest in the well-being of the city and recognize signature events are important. Those signature events that we've established in Redmond are important. There is, there was no desire to diminish those, or the idea is, as Melody pointed out, to smooth out the success of our hospitality industry throughout the year, find new events, find new sources of people who would come and stay here, and, and that's really what's at hand, or what's, what, what the purpose of the money is. If, in my mind, if the city can change those signature events to help achieve the heads in beds, make sure I get that right. You know, I think that that's a great, and, and we did discuss that. We talked about that during the meeting. But I do want to emphasize that that recommendation three does not say anything about taking money away. What it says is that they desire that the city seek other funds for signature events. We have time to do that. I, maybe Mayor Bernie can tell us offhand how much money is actually in the general fund. I think it's like 116 million, but can't remember. So we do, there, to say that this is a certain impact, I think, is not correct. It is a potential impact, but the city has time to either change their fee structure, move things around, find funds, and not, and keep the LTAC intact for its purpose.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you for the detailed conversation. I just wanted to make sure we're still on number one, right?
I think we're, we're--
We're moving.
We're on general questions. We're moving right along.
Okay, so the first thing that stuck out to me, and I want, there's two things that stuck out. I wanted to make sure I have them correct. And I, I believe this was Melody, and I forgot your last name, excuse me. You had suggested that it's optional to contribute to the LTAC. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, maybe I misheard, I might, might have misheard you.
It's not optional.
It's not optional. So we are not, we are getting less funding because of the nature of the economy and that kind of-- kind of thing. Great. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, because of, we're getting, you're getting, we're getting less revenue. It's not optional. Uh, each hotel must participate, um, but it's less revenue because we're running such lower occupancies at a lower rate. So our revenue is, um, really compromised, so the fund is compromised because of that.
Right. And the purpose of you doing business as a hotel isn't to fund the LTAC account, so I totally get that.
No. Make a lot of money for our owners, which we're not doing right now.
Absolutely. Okay. So I get it. Um, thank you for, thank you for that clarification. Um, the other thing that was a little bit alarming, uh, and just to like full, fully go back to the beginning, and this is from Ms. Layler, um, the suggestion was that the funding is, is being committed prior to knowing how much is in the account. So my direct question is, will number one fix that problem?
Number one will not fix that problem. That is the way this fund currently acts. So we have to agree to tourism grants before the year of those events happening. They need plenty of notice, so we commit to giving them money well ahead of those events happening, but they don't receive money until the year the revenue comes in, which is the year of their event.
But if it's part of the budgeting process, we set a revenue amount, right? We, we would project an expected revenue as part of that.
Are you trying to go to cash flow?
Yeah. Well, I wanted to show.
Which one are you going?
Back to the budget, um, where it shows, no, keep going. Oh, that, this one. So right, this is like a good example of where we were anticipating actually only 336, uh, 100,000, right? And then we actually, uh, jumped up quite a bit. And so we were able to actually then provide a lot more in grants, um, for the following.
Like a second round of grants?
Remind me when.
We did do a second round of grants that year.
Okay.
Um, so the way the budgeting process works is we make estimates of what we think is going to come in.
Right.
And then.
It's like running a nonprofit.
Yes. Yes. And then we usually hope to outpace it a little bit, and we were, and we were, and we were. So we are adding to that reserve. COVID threw that all out the door. Um, and so they actually were doing pretty accurate budgeting estimates before COVID. Now it's been a little up in the air. So they were able to get pretty close to what they thought would come in the door, and you could see they were putting, um, less expenses out, so they were actually adding to the reserve. This became a big problem when it became really volatile of a fund. Um, so, yeah, they were getting close to those budgeting estimates, so we didn't really have that problem of, of, um, not meeting our revenues. However, we saw with COVID that that's not always going to be the case.
And then I'll just add, Jackie, that that is why the end fund balance and maintaining a certain level is so important, and why you see other cities having policies around that, because they do it in a similar way.
But it's a projected end fund balance.
This is real. Wait. Your mark back on.
Say that again? It's projected. So the grant, the grants would be given out projecting an end fund balance of X dollars or some percent. Mr. Fields is nodding his head.
No, we know the end fund balance that we have, so it's like, that is the money we know that we would have and keep, and then it would replenish itself. So you might, you might see a, a slight fluctuation, but that's our goal of having an unfound, un, end fund balance.
Right.
So, for example, again, going back to COVID, the reason we were able to sustain the kind of funding that we had before is because we had that end fund balance.
Right. And I just wanted to come, I'm, I'm still stuck on the first, if we put this in the budget process, how is this going to help fix the, the flip of revenue to expenditures?
That is not the problem LTAC was solving for.
Okay. The end fund balance, and number two is?
Number two is wanting some sort of guidance in place of having this sort of, uh, so say the council says, no, let's just plan on having $500,000 on that end fund balance. Then we know, like, at the end of the year, the end fund balance isn't something we play with very much. We, that's one of the few things we do really know about this fund. But with COVID, it was, we were at almost a million. Carson would probably know for sure because he was the chair. We were close to a million before COVID hit in that end fund reserve. Um, so I, I don't know if I'm totally understanding the question here, though.
That money is supposed to be spent. That money is supposed to be spent for LTAC purposes. So I do not have a problem with the end fund balance being zero, provided the objectives have been met and that the fund balance itself does not go negative. However, on this number two recommendation, what I think we're looking for is a fiscal policy that sets a surplus or a deficit threshold that, um, you cannot, um, go above or beyond. So that was one of the amendment options in number two. On number one, I'm just trying to suss out, what will this fix? It sounds like it will fix timing a little bit and may provide a little bit more structure to the account, plus take it, take out the percentage distribution within the account. And that can make it sort of like Hunger Games a little bit, um, for parks, you know, parks and, uh, LTAC money. So I get that. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm, I'm comfortable with moving everything to the budget. And I just wanted to understand that. And then I think that the next piece on the end fund balance, I have some, I have some trouble with that, and I also have trouble with the number three, so.
Yes. It is okay to spend the end fund balance. We, as a city, do not want to spend it down to zero, just to be clear on what would be responsible of this fund, but yes, we are able to spend it. We're just looking for some guidance of what we are allowed to spend down to.
Yeah. I get it. Um, and I guess the, the thing I'm, I'm seeing in this graphic is, I, um, I will reply, reply to the anxiety that I'm feeling projected at me, um, which is, you've had three years of being flipped around.
Yeah.
And I would just, you know, COVID was weird, right?
Yes.
So I don't know that changing policy is actually going to necessarily make a corrective something. Um, so I'm trying to look for that reasoning here.
I understand. Okay. Yeah, let me back up. The reason that recommendation two came out is because other cities have a practice in place and we didn't. And so the LTAC was like, is that really responsible of us to not have some sort of practice in place? It wasn't, that's a great point. It wasn't necessarily to solve for anything. My anxiety was around getting to zero, so yeah. But that's not what you were saying.
And the money.
Yeah. I think with the, um, what the LTAC said is, let's come to an agreement on what's an okay bottom line. And that was a question asked to me during the grant process. I actually think you might have asked it, Vice President Kritzer, of what's okay to get that end fund balance to? And I was like, well, we don't, we haven't really addressed that. And so that also went back to the LTAC, and we asked other cities what they do, and half of them did have a, a practice in place. So that's why our LTAC said we should probably look at doing that.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't necessarily solve for anything, like you said, right?
Well, your end fund balance should be somewhere between the margin.
Yeah.
So, but that's not $800,000, which is way over where we are.
Yes.
So, okay. To try and understand, like, the, the scale of money and the issue that we're trying to handle here.
Thank you.
Number one, I'm good with putting it in the budget. So I think, I don't know if you want to do.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for sorting that out.
The mayor. Um, Mayor Bernie, and then Councilmember Kritzer.
I think, I'm, I'm totally following you. I think the term end fund balance, to me, feels, um, a little loose, like, not really what you're looking for. I do feel like, is there a reserve that you want to have versus the end fund balance? So that's a different story than this. So is there a reserve? You want to make sure that you have every year in order to be able to have that buffer of contingency, whatever you need it for, versus the end fund balance is just what that is. Um, so from a budgeting standpoint, that would feel like a better way to talk about this, and then everything over that reserve would have the possibility of going out and doing the exact thing it's supposed to do. So just a suggestion and terminology.
I think we're talking minimum fund balance, right? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Kritzer, and then Councilmember Carson.
Just a quick follow-up comment on that, and then I have my own, uh, other, other thought. Um, yeah, I, I do think, actually, and I brought this up, I think, during the study session. I'm not sure if it, if it registered to a similar point, um, that I believe, uh, Councilmember, uh, Anderson is making. I do wonder if we're going to look at this policy, whether there is a floor and a ceiling. Um, as you mentioned, it got up to $1 million. Maybe that's too high, you know? Maybe we should, especially given the need that we're hearing from our, our hotel industry, should we be spending a little bit more of that on marketing or on other things, you know, to be able to look at that, right? So, um, you know, it would be interesting to look at if we are going to set a specific reserve target, um, that, that we have both a top and a bottom of it, um, to, to think about. Um, just to make sure that if we have money, that, that we're using it, um, for our community, for the goals of this, of this fund. Um, so, and then I think actually, another point that, that was very thoughtfully raised by my colleague, I think the question of what is the problem we're trying to solve here, and does this solve the problem, um, is, is a question that occurs to me. In particular, the question on timing. And I want to just say, thank you so much, Ms. Lantern, for, um, just sharing with us about the issues that are going on in our hotel industry and hospitality industry, and just, I recognize how, what a challenging time this has been, and I think, um, just overall, our recovery has, has been really challenging for businesses in our community, especially hospitality. Um, you know, when we think about the timeline of making this change, if it's going to not be enacted until the 25 budget, at which point, the TPA should be stood up and should be starting to get revenue. Um, and a lot of the things that I hear in terms of the things we'd like to fund are things that the TPA could fund. I guess the question is, are we going to try to change something, uh, that may be fixed within the timing that we're looking at in the time ahead and creating a problem for our city in terms of, like, the TPA funds probably couldn't go to something like city signature events. Um, uh, and, and what I'm hearing from Director Hamilton is that, really, there are not alternative funding sources for that, other than just making cuts, um, which is just, in my opinion, is going to set us up for a tough, uh, a tough budgeting cycle, kicking that can down the road, um, and not really a decision I'd like to make, um, to be honest, because I think our city events are really super important. Um, so I think, I guess the, the question for me is just, is, is maybe some of the discussion that we have here about, like, should we dig into this further around? Is the, if the question is, can the city get more heads in beds, you know, then, then let's look at that before we jump to a policy change? Or are we going to recover? And will the hospitality industry be recovering? And do they need the funding now, um, more? Because it's, the question is really about now versus in two years. If we look at even the trends from last year to this year, you know, it looks like it's doubled in terms of the revenue that ended up coming in, um, or from '21 to '22, and like, what will we see in those upcoming trends for this fund as well as for our industry? As Councilmember Anderson put it, COVID was weird. And, and do we want to jump to making a, a big policy change, especially one that might affect an important city, um, the city, uh, revenue source for, for something like our, our signature events, before we've kind of explored all the different solutions to this problem?
Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So, yeah, the conversation we were having in 2019 was, how do we not let this balance become so large that it, it becomes potential? Well, you, you can't really become a target because it is dedicated funds. They have to be spent on by law, um, a certain way. Um, but it, it was becoming apparent that it was getting too large. The, we weren't either granting enough, we weren't spending enough on marketing, which I, we were, I think we were spending the appropriate amount on marketing. Um, but it, but it seemed that, um, and I think this whole conversation about the percentages and things is a good conversations for, for us to have. These were arbitrary when they were decided originally in 2005. Um, they were arbitrary when I first became the LTAC chair back in 2008, uh, the first time. I think I've been three different stints. Um, but it, it, uh, it's, it's been odd because, you know, we, we go, we obviously had this time where we were concerned that we had too much money. How, you know, where do we spend this intelligently? Um, and, and I do think that it was great that we had that, given what we didn't know was coming, um, in, in COVID, uh, to be able to do some things that, um, frankly, we, we wouldn't have if we hadn't had that, that large pot of money. We, you know, we basically spent more to get more people to, to come to Redmond for leisure travel, when we knew business travel was basically non-existent. Um, and, you know, we, we had some initiatives that were, actually got, you know, national attention. Um, so, that said, you know, now we're at a situation, and I'm glad Mr. Fields, as the chair, has brought this up, because it's been a, a point of contention for the, the entire time, you know, I've been on council and been, you know, the chair of the LTAC, um, that other, other members felt that this was just completely arbitrary, and that there, we needed to figure out a way that makes sense, uh, for, because we were always overspending the grant portion. We always felt that the, the grants weren't getting enough attention, and that's what's drawing events to be produced in Redmond. And that's what brings people to Redmond, not just producers, but attendee, attendees of those events. And so that was, you know, we felt, it's been the sense on, on the LTAC from 2008, when I joined it the first time, that we simply weren't spending enough, that 9% was not enough on, on those matching fund, uh, matching grants. And that's the other thing, is that the revenue, uh, so, yeah, we, we plan, we, we have some sense of what the revenue is going to be, uh, but because they're matching grants, we've already, it, it already gets into the fund by the time typically where the money is, um, is, uh, given out, uh, because they're matching, they have to spend money, uh, on the event to produce it, and those have to be verified, and that takes a little bit of time. So typically, we actually do have the money in the fund, um, but we have to, you know, we have to rely on estimates to know what the, what it's likely to have in it, um, which is kind of how we figure out what the, uh, at least at the time, what we were going, with the pot of grants, might or should look like. Um, and so it, it's been this, this difficulty. I think that going to a budgeting, um, where council is involved in that budget, I think is the right thing to do. Um, and it, I think also from a, uh, administrative standpoint, 2% is clearly undervaluing what it takes to actually administer the fund. Um, and, and so that's another aspect that clearly just is, you know, 15 versus 2% that, that you can't do that very long and, and, uh, you know, for it to be sound doing that. So I'm all for us, for council taking the initiative and, and budgeting this in our budgeting process. Um, it, it is going to be challenging, uh, for, to, to figure out, because, and we, you know, we could say, well, yeah, we're going to allocate this amount, but, you know, we, we obviously have to be very deliberate in, in that, because only certain things can be supported by these funds. And, you know, but I think, understanding, hey, we've got this amount, and then we're going to, we're going to deviate up this biennium this way, and then being able to change that in a subsequent biennium, I think is the right thing to do. So.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask my question. Um, so will we still receive recommendations from LTAC of who to fund through the budgeting process?
Yes, they have to do that per RCW. And, uh, we do it annually.
Okay. And then, um, I'll hold off, I'll let Mr. Fields go. And then I'm hoping that we get to the recommendations after this, although we're hearing some bubblings coming up.
Um, so, two things. One, LTAC money has a specific purpose. We saw it on the chart earlier. I'm, and I'm, also said this a few weeks ago, I'm a big fan of color of money, meaning you set aside funds for that purpose, and that's what you use it for. And we're required by law to use this money to create a hospitality industry that, uh, brings people to Redmond, to share the experience of Redmond, pay for a room while they do it, and, uh, promote the city in general, because people travel here, they learn something, they take it back, and they go back to their colleagues in Ohio or wherever and say, you know what? You guys ought to have your conference in Redmond, because we did, and it was great. Uh, that's the purpose of, and- That's the purpose of, and, and I think, as Melody talked about, you know, we're, we're trying to expand that. The hoops thing was a good example. There are other examples of things that the city of Redmond could host. And so I'm, I'm concerned about the technicality that, I don't know how we started funding signature events with LTAC money. I don't know how we didn't fund the admin side, as Councilmember Carson pointed out, with LTAC money. But, but that feels correct to me, to take that money for its purpose and use it for its purpose. If signature events can find a way to say, we also can bring people from out of town and have them stay in Redmond, that's great. I'm all, all in favor of that, because that is in line with the use of that money. With respect to the discussion about a target fund or reserve fund, I don't, I don't really care what we call it. I think it's important to understand that stability and predictability is, let me put it differently, the lack of predictability and the lack of stability is mitigated by planning ahead and having funds, when you have them, set it aside for those days when you might not have it. So I don't understand, whatever we choose for a level is fine, but, but to not have some guidance on a funding balance, whether you call it reserve, whether you call it minimum, don't care, as long as that it's set there for that purpose of creating stability. And not just if you don't get the revenue, but also opportunities come up. And this money can be used for unexpected opportunities as well. So having it there creates value. So I, I don't think there should be any question about that. Last thing, just remembered, using percentages that were created years ago for whatever purpose there was, degrades our decision-making capability. Having, having a look at how to, you know, what the, the revenue projections are, what the fund balance projections are, what the needs are, gives us each budget cycle, the decision-making ability to say, how do we best use this money and create value, as opposed to being dictated by percentages that we don't even follow? So that's a no-brainer to me. Sorry, we, we just need to get away from that.
Thank you. So I wanted to move us on, if everybody's good, with going over the recommendations and talking about where we feel, where we sit. So recommendation one is to remove the percentage-based budgeting process. Does anyone want to share if they have any amendments? Or are we good with it as it is? Or are we, do we not want to move forward with that? Councilmember Stewart?
I have a question that Councilmember Fields just inspired. So if we move it to the budgeting process, so currently there are these categories, the grants, the administration, the marketing, and the signature events. If we move this to the budgeting process, what assurances can all of the interested parties have that we will continue to maintain those categories and that get to the predictability that Councilmember Fields was, was asking for by removing the percentages? Director Hamilton, do you, have you thought about how this might affect not just the next cycle? For instance, with the city events, I think, or maybe Jackie, with, with the grant cycles moving forward? How, just how would we preserve that?
Sorry, Councilmember Stewart, will you repeat?
Sure. So let's, if, if we're going to adopt, to move to the budget cycle, then we get to the budget cycle, and traditionally, we have funded grants, we have funded the marketing and the administration of the LTAC and the signature events. So we will presumably use those categories to make decisions about how the LTAC money is spent in that current budget. Then two years goes by, and we're writing the next budget. What assurances are that the categories remain the same?
I see what you're saying.
Go ahead.
So I actually staffed an LTAC in another city, so that used that process. And so staff would work with the LTAC to understand what those priorities are and what funds should be directed to what priorities. And I will say in that instance, they didn't change too much unless there was an opportunity. And that opportunity was then expressed in the recommendation from LTAC to the council of why there is a change in that and what it is intended to achieve. So it's a methodical thing. I wouldn't say that it would be one budget, one year, and then completely flip-flop the next year. I think the LTAC is all representatives that come from business-minded sets, and they have the community's priority in, in mind with that. And then working with staff expertise to provide a recommendation to council that, and council still does have that approval power on if that budget should be approved or not. So there's a lot of opportunities in there to check and balance if, if needed.
And I think, because you did ask me directly, I, I would say that, you know, it, it does change predictability for, for us, depending on what those financial policies look like. That does change that predictability. I think there's always been some level of unpredictability, even with the percentages. It's gone up, and it's gone down, and it's gone. And we don't even really, like you saw, we don't even really actually get the 39%. If it moves into the budget cycle, what it becomes is a conversation of, well, are you, is our city signature events getting this amount in, in LTAC dollars or not? If the answer is no, then there's a gap to fill. If the gap's not filled, then events are reduced. So I think it will continue to bring, and events in general are a relatively volatile market. They're impacted by every recession. The sponsorship market and the ability to bring in alternate funding is very different than it was even five years ago, much less 15. So it does take away quite a bit of assurance and predictability from us. But that also is, that, that's the decision of city council. But I will say events are often, when we look to reduce out things, and we have to look at the things that make the lowest impact to the safety of our community, events and recreation unfortunately do tend to be the first to go.
Sure. Thank you so much, and thank you to your team. I do believe that there's still so much creative room to play with, with the, the different opportunities for us all to work together. The hotel packages, for instance, I'm, immediately I was like, oh, is Farin getting in on some, you know, morning croissant baskets in that package? You know, like, immediately I'm like playing around with that idea, and just like really hope that that gets explored. I do believe in the event. So thank you for the answer to, to the question. Director Hamilton, you kind of said it, but it's mine to say again, which is that if we put this in the budget process, then what we choose to do each biennium with signature events would be our decision, or the future council's decision every single time. So there would be a heads-up if a major change was made, and it would be the council owning that decision. So thank you, because I did have those one last questions.
I think one way I'm, I'm thinking about it a bit is that LTAC will still continue functioning the way they do in bringing forward the recommendations, is what I'm hearing. And just like we did with the human services funding, they brought forward recommendations, and it'll be kind of like that part of the budget process. So I think it's, it's a process that we're already kind of used to, it's just changing what we're currently used to for LTAC. Councilmember Kritzer.
Just a follow-up question on, on this for Director Hamilton. So if we, because it's hard for me to discuss recommendation one without thinking about recommendation three. So, and actually, this is up on the screen under do not approve and amend example, right? So I would love to have your thought, if the council were to move, if, say, council members felt strongly that, you know, we wanted to move away from these percentages, but, but wanted to maintain a kind of protection around dedicated funding for city signature events and cultural arts. Like, whether, whether that would be sufficient if we were to dedicate X number of dollars annually, that is always going to be carved out from that fund? It actually, I guess, would take away some of the volatility, but what, what's your opinion on that? And what would be the level that you would recommend if we were to do that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Frankly, in some ways, I'd prefer it, because again, it does create a predictability, and it changes the, that, you know, if you were to look at the history of what's kind of being allocated over to city signature events, it goes up, it goes down, and it's all based on kind of trying to project out this fund, which is a difficult fund to project out. So I'm more than fine with that model. The current levels that we are being funded at is sufficient for the goals that we are really looking to hit, and the, to help fulfill the priorities that we feel like we are being asked to fulfill from city leadership and city council. So right now, that's at the measure of $150,000 a year between the three things, Derby Days, Redmond Lights, cultural arts programming, that's per year, so that's $300,000 per biennium. My recommendation would also be that if we were to adopt something like that, and this is similar to other ways that we adopt fees and things like that, and I would actually recommend it, probably anything that you kind of earmarked an amount for, particularly like marketing as well, that you would increase it based on CPI, just so that you're also not shortchanging yourself that in five years, we come back and we're like, oh, just kidding, $150,000 isn't enough anymore, because CPI, that's just not going to set us up for long-term success. So that's what I would recommend is, and would kind of create some stability, because you asked.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, yeah, I think that that's helpful as we get into this conversation. I'd also say, just, I wanted to reflect on, on in particular, our city signature events and the question of how they align with the LTAC. And I do think there's a reason they've been funded by the LTAC, because they do bring a lot of people to, to our city. And when we look at some of the other types of events that the LTAC funds, like community events, almost none of them are as big as Derby Days, in terms of how many people come. There are definitely some events that, that do drive a higher amount of heads in beds, as you mentioned, for example, like Crossfire Tournament or things like that. But there's a lot of events that do a lot less. So I think in terms of the things, and also things that make our city a place to go to, for example, Derby Days is literally the reason that when you come into Redmond, you see a sign that says that we're the bicycle capital of the Pacific Northwest. And it's, it's something that has kind of put us on the map. And similar for Redmond Lights, it's like the things that create a special community that people want to visit. So it may not be like that exact, that exact weekend, or, or that moment that is the only impact. So I think that's just something for us to think about. And I think in terms of the legal obligations, if, if it didn't align to the legal reasons that you're able to allocate things for LTAC, then we would have been, we wouldn't have been able to do so over the past many years. At least, that's my assumption. So I think that it's just something for us to think about there. And lastly, I just wanted to say, because I didn't get to say it, thank you so much to the LTAC committee members for thinking this through, starting this conversation, and responding to, responding to, to questions that, that we really started raising, and just appreciate that.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for those comments. And just to be super direct about where I'm at, I'm at this one, do not approve and amend. I do not support cutting the funds for parks, but I do have another idea. This hasn't really been discussed, so if it's harebrained, let that be. My, my suggestion is that council creates a separate fund specifically for signature events, and starts that with an initial funds transfer of $450,000 from LTAC. That gives you a three-year runway to figure out the rest of this stuff. And then on item number two, we were talking about setting a minimum cash balance. So I wanted to ask LTAC to recommend what that could be. My suggestion would be 50% of the year prior of the revenue. And then Ms. Kritzer actually mentioned the idea of a cap, but I think there's something to be said about a surplus budget. So if the fund has more money in it than the directive from council, could be that that surplus fund goes to this new signature account. And then council has the problem to solve of filling a gap in a tough budget year. That's just kind of a mix of what I've heard. I, I'm not supportive of removing the funds. I get the, I get the idea, but if there is, if there is a need to do that, which sounds like there may be some justification from that, and so until that gets sorted, it sounds like you need some runway to make a plan. And then kind of seeing what that might look like percentage-wise, or just, you know, the typical, what does a healthy fund look like for LTAC? And then what does a surplus fund look like? And then council could set some sort of overflow provisions in, in some sort of resolution or language that will help make sure that we retain the signature event, and then also that, that fund is healthy enough for future purposes. That's how I would, that's how I see two and three kind of rolling out for me.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
I have a suggestion, and maybe because it's kind of late and I'm tired. However, a lot of you had, have had a lot of very interesting creative ideas about how to move forward. I feel like, and I appreciate the recommendations from LTAC, but I feel like if we give our team a little bit of time to kind of talk about some of the different options, we might be able to come back to you with some, some other options to take a look at that might fit more of what the whole conversation was about.
Thank you.
And then we would schedule it for another date to come back.
Got it. I would love to get a temperature check on the first recommendation, if we want to move this to the budget process and remove the percentages. Anybody? We got three, four, middle, no opinion, and online? I have a thumbs up online. So recommendation one, to move forward to the budget, remove the percentage in budget process, we have consensus around. Recommendation two, we might need a little more conversation on that one, about end fund balance, or some sort of end fund practice. I am hearing quite a bit of mixed, but most people are in support of having some sort of end fund. So if you would like to bring forward a recommendation, go back to LTAC and see what, what they think is a good amount. Seeing a thumbs up there. Awesome. Recommendation three, I had a, my own idea on this one, and it was to kind of push this off until potentially the fall, to see what creative things that the, the staff can do around economic development of getting people to stay in beds, and what those creative packages could look like. And maybe we kind of revisit this part of the conversation after the summer months. How do people feel about that?
Can I give a thought? Councilmember Vice?
Yeah.
I think I would go towards, just on these in general, before we actually, because I, I know you just got the temperature on number one, and I get that everyone's kind of good with that. I would be fine with that if we can work out number three, but it makes me anxious to do number one without understanding how number three is going to work. And I, I would just support what the mayor said, because it seems like we've got our great economic development team, we've got our parks team, we're all one team, Redmond, LTAC, you know, is, to come, come together and to figure out how this is going, how this could work, and, and bring us the proposal back for us to, to look at. Because I, I think, I do appreciate the idea of the being creative and figuring out what we can do in the time ahead. But I also don't want to put the pressure on our Parks Department, that if they, they can't suddenly create some magical amount of, of new people coming to our city this year, then all of a sudden, they're on the chopping block to lose all the funding for our city events. So I think it's not really enough time, but it would be good to be able to pilot things, and to figure out what is really the policy that would work, so that our staff can, can do great work, both in terms of funding the admin work for LTAC and also the, the city events. So I would, I would, I agree with the opportunity to just bring this back and talk more about it before we make a decision on number three.
Thank you. And to be clear, I wasn't saying that the pressure is on, and you've got to get people in beds.
I was, I was gonna say, we might need more than three months, but I, so I do appreciate, yes.
Just seeing if that is a program that people will take advantage of, and if there is an increased number of people that take it, because we know that it's only going to trend up when you have more time to actually develop it.
Correct. So, Councilmember Anderson.
Just to clarify, on number two, if it end fund number, I'm looking for a minimum cash balance, and I don't know if other council members are, so I just wanted to clarify. I would like that, too, if, if it is in addition. And then on the seeking alternative funding sources for parks, I, I get that there's interest in that. in that. You can pull a rabbit out of the hat if you'd like. I'm sure it can happen, if only from Parks Department. But the question I had on that, now I'm losing it because I was trying to make a joke. The, oh, can you, would it be something where the Parks Department would have to apply through the grants process?
So, are you okay if I respond now? So I have a couple items, if that's okay. First, I'll respond to that one and say that you also could recommend, rather than Parks having a set aside, that they could apply as a part of the grants process, which would then put them in the same metrics as we are, as we are reviewing the other people that are applying for grants. So I just wanted to also put that as an option that you can think about for later on. What I'm hearing is that, number one, we can move forward with the staff, understanding that there's concern of how it impacts number three. I think we can move forward with number one and still work with signature events teams to make sure that, like, I understand what you all are saying in terms of number three. Number two, I'm hearing that there's possibly an amendment that not only do we want an end reserve, but we want to know what would be the max reserve, and we could ask LTAC that maybe at the same time. Does that sound about right? And maybe could I get a, the thumbs up if that's true?
I will specifically say, I'd like to know what, there would be a surplus policy, like, so you would, my understanding is that, number one, you'd set the budget. So if anything above that budget, what do you do with those funds?
Okay. So, Mayor? Oh, yeah, so I was gonna say, so both, both what we're talking about in terms of the minimum and the maximum, and what would be the policy for either going below the minimum or above the maximum?
Yes, and I think Ms. Kritzer mentioned a cap, which isn't the same thing to me as a surplus, so, yeah.
Got it. Sorry, Mayor?
It can be all of those things. We'd be happy to entertain those recommendations.
I think that part of, in my mind, part of this conversation feels like we're going back in time because prior to 2019, we had too much, too much money in this fund, and we were a little stuck at how we spent it. And so I think this is a really good opportunity, I think, really, very differently about what LTAC is and what it can be in order to get to the goals of getting people into our hotels. So I think, and then that would also solve the problem for when we have too much money again, because then we'd be able to get that money out as well. So I think it'll be a good, in the long run, to kind of sort all these policy decisions out in a much more structured fashion than what we have right now.
And then, sorry if it's, okay, the final thing I wanted to say was that I just want to really appreciate Jackie and Philly for the amount of time that they put into these recommendations and work. It's taken a lot of work to get up to this point. We are definitely dedicated to continuing to answer more of these questions. We also have the Economic Development Strategic Plan and a lot of kind of more overarching economic development work that we're trying to do. So I just want to be honest about our team's staff capacity to be, you know, thinking and following up on a lot of the creative ideas specifically around how to make sure that Parks is getting heads in beds in that work. So I just wanted to be honest about that to you all as well.
Appreciate it. Vice President Kritzer, I think you were wiggling to...
Yeah. Yeah, I did a little hand. Yeah, I just, one, one also piece I wanted to follow up on, which is outside of this set of recommendations, but what I heard from Ms. Lanthorne tonight is that, because we're, as I mentioned before, I think these policies are looking a little further out at like the long-term kind of policy and how this runs. But in the short term, if our hotel industry, our hospitality industry needs some extra support, or if there's more things we need to invest in, speaking of the end fund balance, I would ask if LTAC wants to look at making some sort of recommendation from the money that's there now, because I think, I think you said it's something like $700,000. That seems above the amount that we've spent in a typical year, so when we're talking about that surplus, perhaps the surplus this year should be recommended by LTAC to be allocated towards whatever would be most impactful to supporting the industry now. So that might be able to get at it while we kind of figure out what we want to do on all this. Thank you.
Thank you. That feels like a good response to Councilmember Anderson's request, which is, if this, then what? Do you spend it on? And how do you make that determination? And I think a big part of it is around having the flexibility to be mindful of what's needed in the moment. So thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
So in that sort of category, if we're going to have a max fund, you have to, there's only two ways I know to manage to that. One, stop the money from coming in. Or, or two, spend more money. Spend more money. So you need a plan. You can't just say arbitrarily, oh, we're going to max out. You have to have a, that creates an action of some kind, so.
Yep, I think that's what we're saying, is that when we get to that max, it's not that we would stop accepting funds, although I'm sure you might appreciate that, but that we would have a plan for how we would ask LTAC to make a recommendation to council of what those funds, surplus funds should go to.
So there's not a mechanism for a refund?
You could discuss that, but I don't think so.
California does it all the time. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. I believe we have given you a direction enough for coming back to us at a future study session. Is that correct? Do you feel good? Councilmembers feel good-ish?
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
I just have one final compliment for all of you, which is that you all sat, you are city, four city leaders and a lovely guest who sat down and said, this is going to be a hard conversation, but you sat down giggling about it and laughing about it and kept the conversation, like, we, this was a really enjoyable conversation in something that could have been really difficult, and that is because of your leadership. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you.
Yes. Thank you all so much, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thanks, everyone. I will move on to our final item, which is talk time. Does anyone have anything for talk time tonight? Councilmember Carson?
So I just wanted to remind our vast viewing audience that there might not be many of left still on, but we have just opened a demonstration dog park in Luke McRedmond Park, which is near the Hyatt House. The parking, the park parking is between the Hyatt House and Redmond Way, and there's a dedicated lot for the park. And it's for, there's a small dog area and a regular dog area, I guess, an unlimited-sized dog area. And hopefully I'll see folks down there in the next few days while it's nice.
Yes, it's been well utilized in the couple of days that it has been up and running, and it's been super fun to wander by and check it out. So definitely check it out if you haven't. Anyone else? Councilmember Kritzer?
I just figured, since this is talk time, there's been two different things brought up by council members in public session briefly about conversations they've been having in smaller sessions. So I was curious if anyone wants to share about this. First, I was curious to hear you briefly mentioned earlier that, Council President Forsythe, that you and, Councilmember Fields, had met with Kelly Cochran to discuss some ideas on finance. I don't know if you want to share about that now, or if it's still being baked, but I was, I was curious about it, and so I thought I'd ask about it in open session.
It is still being baked, but ideas will come forward through the fact committee, which Councilmember Fields is the chair of. But really, we just wanted to meet with Director, interim Director Cochran, to see how things are going with all the tech implementations and do what we can to best support to make sure that those are going to be well received and on track. And Councilmember Fields, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think, yes, exactly what Council President said, we want to be able to support. Because if anyone has been through this, and I'm sure all of you have, when you make these kinds of changes to your IT systems, you also have a lot of process changes, you have a lot of opportunities. So we wanted to sort of take this opportunity, how are we going to make sure that the customer called council gets the reporting and gets the benefit of this new technology? And that was really sort of the heart of it. And it was like an initial discussion, so there's a lot to be resolved here, and I'm sure that council leadership will bring the opportunity back to council to say, what kind of reporting would you like to see? Or what kind of metrics do you think that we can add to our list of oversight? That kind of...
Very cool. Thank you. I was just curious, my interest was piqued and I, because of quorum issues, just thought I would ask about it.
Well, just so you know, I did mention you specifically in the earlier meeting this afternoon, and I said, Councilmember Kritzer will have plenty to say about this.
Shockingly, yes.
Yeah, we, the opportunity to bring forward what you want to see to help make sure that we're getting the information we want will likely come through the committee of the whole, and making sure that it's on the agenda so that everyone has enough time to actually think about what those things might look like.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else? I have a couple. Councilmember Stewart?
This one might be on your list already, but I just wanted to follow up on the conversation about the legislative hopper, and we looked at a draft of that last time, so where we're at on that. So maybe I'll just leave that as a question, and then you can address that if you'd like. And then we kind of started to, I would like to know or have some direction, because I am getting a lot of questions in community about it. What is the council thinking since the Public Safety levy didn't pass last year? And what might we be working on? And so we've gotten a lot of feedback tonight. I'm just curious, is council leadership working to, to schedule this? Or are we having conversations headed toward any of the other committees, I guess? Or just maybe where we're at? If, if there's someone in the room who might have an update for the community that we can give today, or we can give it, give one soon?
I would throw that one over to Mayor Bernie.
Working on it soon.
The council will be working on it? I mean...
No, my staff is working on it, but we'll get back at some point. Were you asking a different question, like what is...
Yeah, I guess, I guess, what does that mean? So staff is working on a solution to the, the problems that were, that are still unaddressed because of the levy passed?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're working on a bunch of different things right now, so we'll get back to you when we have more information on that. As far as like the funding, you know, we, we funded, I don't want to go into a long budget discussion right now, but, but, you know, we funded some things with one-time funds, so we're going to have to address those in the next budget. So there's a lot of one-time fund situations we're going to have to address in the next budget.
Yeah.
That's, that's a broader discussion there.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
And hot reform is still coming along, having some backend conversations. We just talked about it today with, with Jason, and have a few things that we need to look at, and it's, should be coming soon, so watch this space. Is it? Oops. Okay, so we had some conversation with Jill today, council leadership, about Derby Days. Do we want to have a contingent in the parade for council again? Yes, no, maybe? Parade, parade?
Can we ride our bikes?
Sure. It's gonna be real slow.
It's such a short route. I rode a bike last time. It was a little hazardous, so think about it.
It is pretty...
My only suggestion is that we get some music, because I felt like when we had a little band near us, it was awesome. So I think that, I'm in.
We could also create our own float, and we can have EVs in the parade. So if we wanted to do that, we could have that conversation as well. But participation in the parade in general, onboard? I see four onboard. That's enough. Okay. And then, do we also want to have a booth, like we did last year? Seeing yeses, majority yeses, booth-ish?
A city booth or a council?
Council booth. We did.
You and I served in the booths together.
I didn't understand that it was specifically to council.
Council booth, yes. Yeah, sure. Yeah, council booth, yes. Carson, did you have something else to add? Okay. And then, as far as hosting a meeting outside, we were looking at September in the park. I know this has been an initiative that folks have been interested in, and having, we would be a special meeting where we would be outside, and we were trying to get a temperature check on if it would be a Thursday or a weekend, and if it would be a formal town hall style or a more low-key kind of mix and mingle opportunity. So looking for feedback on those two things.
The downtown park?
Correct.
Would we set it up as, like, find some little corner and say, here's city council? Or would it be an event?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
I can share, I think, one brainstorm I had when we were discussing this with Jill earlier today would be potentially to set up around the park some tables, maybe under tents, just in case for, depending on the weather, where we could set like two council members per tent to be sitting at a table, and community members could come and talk with them. And maybe we do a two-hour event where halfway through, we all switch which tables we sit at, but we sit in, in smaller groups. So we bring it back to the original idea we had of community conversations, where people could come, talk with us, we could talk about our different priorities, and we both, people who knew about the event, and also anyone who kind of happens upon us in the park. But I think one of the other questions we had was if, I think we were looking at dates, and September is pretty busy in terms, already, it's pretty packed in terms of items that we're going to be looking at. So it would have to be either Thursday or a weekend. But potentially, we could also do it in August, if anyone wanted to work in August. I know that we've canceled everything beyond the first meeting in August, but that could also be a different time to do it, if anyone had thoughts on it.
Other thoughts? Outdoor? Yep.
I kind of like the more informal kind of mix and mingle. I don't know that the acoustics necessarily work well for like a town hall kind of thing. We have amplification, but it just seems like too much of a spectacle. So I think a more informal, everybody gets to, you know, come chat with everybody, and yeah, maybe a topic-based kind of thing where you, you kind of do switch around, and maybe every half hour, you move to another, another tent or something, so, so that you can talk about different subjects instead of just ones that you're...
20/50 all the time.
Right, right, or Public Safety or whatever, yeah, yeah.
Cool. Awesome. Yeah. Open, open conversation, please.
I am going to just give credit that, this is based on a suggestion from Councilmember Stewart, so in case Councilmember Stewart has any comments, I would, I would call her out a little bit to ask.
Thank you for calling me in. I'm disappointed in the, the setup of this, in, just in that, it sounds like council leadership has gotten some, some, had some conversation, and, and we've, we've not been a part of that. So now we're being asked to respond to aversion, and that's fine. One thing that would be important to me, no matter going forward, is inclusion. So physically coming to this building to participate in government is something that a lot of people don't know how to do. And we're a city that is dedicated to equity and inclusion and is demonstrating that in a variety of ways right now. So if we are going to include people who have been excluded in the past, or who are among the one in five people we learned about tonight who aren't paying attention enough about their government to, to give opinions on major issues, I believe it's important to demonstrate to folks how they can participate in their government and to learn how to participate in their government. So I was really curious about having a demonstration council meeting in the park, because it's a place where people already are, they could see something going on and choose to opt in. This is something very different that I'm sure could be lovely, but it is not what I originally was most curious about. So it is, it is just something completely different, and that is fine if there are hurdles, you know, that council leadership has been in discussion of, that, that we are not apprised of and can't respond to in this moment.
Let me, let me add some clarity to that. So in the conversation today, we did continue to talk about the ability to have a, a meeting as a regular meeting in that public space. And per the RCW, all the, all the regular city council meetings must take place at Redmond City Hall, per our council rules and procedures. So that is where we kind of shifted the conversation to having a special meeting and doing some other sort of community outreach and engagement in the park, as we thought was the core of what the, the ask was. I didn't, I apologize, if the core was to have a demonstration of like what we actually do and what our normal meetings look like, but per our own rules and procedures, we just learned this morning, we actually cannot do that exact exercise.
Yeah, I would say, I think, and I appreciate the feedback, and I would say, if, if the council really wanted to do more of like a business, not, not business meeting, but a, we could do a special meeting, which is what we did learn, we could have a special meeting, and we could do it in a formal way where we all sit in a line and we have discussion in a public forum with maybe some loud speaker or something like that, if that's what... in a public forum with maybe some loud speaker or something like that, if that's what people desired. I think it was more, as, as Council President Forsyth said, we thought the intent was more to just have our council members available to the public and talking about things during, in, in a forum where all seven of us could be there. But if the goal is to have a meeting that's more formal, then I would be interested to know if the rest of the council would prefer that, or, or what people's thoughts are on that. Because I think we were just trying to brainstorm the best way to make it most easy for people to participate, since it might be hard in that forum for people to actually engage, they might prefer to talk to us one-on-one.
I, I think a business meeting, even if it's called a special meeting, is extremely difficult to do in that kind of a setting, because you can't control screaming kids potentially in the grassy area. You can't, there's a lot of traffic, you can't, you can, you know, the traffic noise. I think it's, it's unbelievably difficult technically to put on, and, and I don't think it, it would serve, I don't think it would serve our constituents very well. I think being able to engage, I, I don't think that anybody necessarily wants to watch us do a roll call vote of the, the, you know, the consent agenda, and then talk about committees or whatever. I think they want to be able to engage with us. And I think the idea that us coming to them, wherever them, you know, wherever they are, is, to me, is the goal that we should be setting. It's, it's not to show what we do. They can tune into RCTV, or watch us on Facebook, or wherever, to see those things happen, but they wouldn't be able to engage with us. And I think it would be super distracting to, to try to even run a meeting in that kind of a setting.
Yeah, and we can reiterate the opportunities to engage with us in this space as well, in, in that setting. Go ahead.
So I'm thinking in my head of the couple of times we've been at like elementary schools, the, for a special meeting, we would just need a single item called talk time, and just open and close the meeting, but if that kind of hits on what Ms. Stewart was looking for, I, I don't see an issue with that. One thing we didn't do at like Audubon Elementary School was open a meeting. It was, council was there, I don't remember how we did that. But we would, it wasn't like a formal meeting, it was a community conversation of some kind, yeah, so.
We called it a community conversation. I would think with our current clerk, we might do it a little differently.
Yeah.
And a little more formal, to make sure we're opening the meeting and closing the meeting, because there would be a quorum present. I'm, I would say, I'm up to whatever challenge you all want. So if, if you want to run a meeting outside, I think it's totally doable. I think it would be really interesting, and, and/or an interesting spectacle, and people might think that we're putting on performance art, and that would be fine, too. But, but I don't, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily rule it out. I think that, I know we have the technology now where we could do something like that. I think that would be really fascinating. We could do a little research to see if that's happened in the public before, in that kind of way, but I don't, you know, I think to the council member's point, I think, you know, it's important to kind of bring our, bring our show out to the public, whatever that looks like, and I think that can be important to do, and it's a little different than, than what we've done in the past, and I, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with that idea. So, but, but whatever you all want to do, it does, it sounds to me like there's a lot of different ideas, and maybe there's a, a way to send out a poll or something like that to see what people want to do. I don't know if you're going to solve this problem tonight, I guess that's what I'm, I keep, I'm, I'm very tired.
100%. There's a lot of ideas, and this is actually an example of an idea. We ended our council retreat with a brainstorm of various folks, things that folks were interested in. I don't know why this one got picked up. I'm, I'm glad in many ways that it did. I think maybe because it would have to be scheduled, but there's a lot of ideas that haven't had their, their full airtime, and nor are we able to give it full airtime, you know, here tonight. So I'm just looking forward to the next part of the council retreat.
So I think, given that there are still a lot of ideas, we were, we were hoping to streamline the conversation and just talking about it tonight, because we thought we heard everyone, but I will get back in touch with Jill. She had mentioned bringing it to committee and having a bigger discussion, so we'll just go ahead and have that discussion on probably a FAC committee in the future, so we can give it some more thought, brainstorm on your ideas, think about really what you want it to be like, what you want it, you want it to accomplish and achieve, and then we can have that conversation at a future follow-up. All right. I will give a plug for Coffee with Council on May 18th at, or May 16th at 8:00 to 9:00 AM at Victor's Coffee. Councilmember Kritzler and I will be there for that one, and the one in the summer, if I have my notes right, will be Councilmember Carson and Councilmember Stewart. Date to be determined by Ms. Hudson, and, and you all. So she will be reaching out soon. Anything else? Yeah.
Just, just a follow-up, since it was raised about our council survey results, because we were doing some agenda setting this past week, and, and we did schedule it for the sec, the second study session in May, so we will be looking at the results of those, of the, of the prioritization exercise we all did, and following up on that during that study session. So know that it's on the agenda, we're going to be getting to it.
Yes, looking at the results of the survey, making sure that we have all the information we need from that survey results, and plugging that into the overall spreadsheet that we have from last year, and looking at it holistically, so. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. If anyone has anything else, speak now or forever hold your peace. And I see nothing, so we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.